Taxation hearings and review presentations regarding the various budgets. At the conclusion of this meeting, we will convene the second meeting regarding the adoption of the budgets. I would like to ask Cindy Geltz, our budget director, who is here up front, to come forward, she already has, to provide presentations regarding the various budgets. At this time, we will convene the public hearing and the truth and taxation hearings for the Maricopa County budget. Before I, sorry, I have no mic.
Okay, I just, okay. Okay, so I guess I get to do that again. Sorry, guys, they need my mic on. It seems to be working with no feedback, so we'll start this over again for those of which who didn't hear me. Today, we have the two meetings posted, which deal with the public hearings and the adoption of final budgets for the county and the county special districts. At this meeting, we will convene the public hearings, including the truth and taxation hearings, and review presentations regarding the various budgets. At the conclusion of this meeting, we will convene the second meeting regarding the adoption of each of the budgets. I would like to ask Cindy Geltz, who happens to be up here, our budget director, to come forward, which she has, to provide presentations regarding the various budgets. At this time, we will convene the public hearing and the truth and taxation hearings for the Maricopa County budget. Before Cindy gets started, as you can see, my colleagues are not up on the dais with me. I had the mask on all the way up until I got started talking. I'm not around anybody. Everyone in this group is wearing their masks, so thank you for participating with our, with our mask policy countywide. I'd also like to say all of my colleagues are on the phone. We are waiting for Supervisor Chukri.
Chairman.
Great. Steve, great to hear you. I know that all of them are on the meeting, so with that, we will get started with Cindy. Cindy, welcome. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. So today, we're going to go over the changes that we have to the Maricopa County budget. That's what we're going to start with, since you did the tentative adoption back on May 18th. Huh, okay. Well, okay, yours is up, okay, good. So we divided these changes into four categories. There are shifts between general fund departments, so money moving in the general fund from one department to another, general and detention fund reallocations, we have special revenue fund contingency items, and then reallocation between funds or appropriations. So the total of all those changes, excuse me, is about $3.4 million, and the $3.4 million will be offset by reducing other areas, so there's no net change to the budget. So the first area of changes is the shifts between the general fund departments. The first two actually are related, so the justice system transcription and interpretation, that is a function that was reporting up through Val Beckett when she was at the county manager's office and now is assistant county manager. That group provided transcription, translation, and interpretation services for the county attorney's office and the public defense office. So it made sense really to take those people that were providing those services and have then be part of their entities, either the county attorney or the public defense. So each of the county attorney and the public defense system got one interpreter and one office support staff who will coordinate their efforts for the county attorney's office. That amounted to $150,029. For the just, for the public defense, it's $149,662, and the assistant county manager's budget went down by those respective amounts. The next item is in fiscal year 20, the county attorney's office had a plan to use some of their paper performance money for their tier system for their attorneys, to change attorneys' ones to twos, twos to threes. That plan was not completely fleshed out by the time we did the budget, so they've since finalized that plan. So that change will add $409,000 to their budget, and the contingency that we had for that, non-departmental, was reduced. There was a copier center that was operated by the Superior Court in the East Court Building that was utilized by Public Defense Services. Now that function is going to reside at the Public Defense Office, so they had the support for that function moved from the Superior Court. Superior Court's budget went down $74,805, and the Public Defense Services budget's going up 74,805. And then finally, the Industrial Development Authority, those positions were previously under Shelby's ACM. They moved to finance, and now we've moved them actually over into Leanne's Assistant County Manager budget, so that's a total of $540,951, and there's, of course, revenue to offset that. So those changes total $1.3 million, and they were all offset by reductions. The next item is changes between general and detention funds. So at MCSO, they had a detention officer position that was funded in the general fund. They've taken that position and moved it over to the detention fund, so it can provide detention in the jails, so that was a reduction in the general fund side of 81,473, with the cost shifting over to detention. As they do each year, the sheriff's office needs to reallocate their internal service charges based upon the distribution of the cost between the general and detention fund, so they will be increasing actually the general fund by $251,000 and reducing the detention fund by that same amount. Finally, these next three are related, so I'll talk about them as a group. So when we did the 2% reductions, we had put amounts in for each of the departments, the juvenile probation department, adult probation, and Superior Court. Between tentative and final, the judicial branch redistributed those savings, so actually, what's going to happen, all these net to zero. The juvenile detention budget is going to go up in probation for $1 million and down in detention for $17,000. Adult probation's budget in the general fund will go up $274,000 and down $915,000, and the Superior Court's general fund budget will go down $346,000. All these changes then will require a change to what we were putting in extra, what we call our above base maintenance of effort, shift our funding transfer from the general fund over to the detention fund, so that will be going down $1.1 million. Okay. The next item is special revenue contingency items, so there are three items really having all to do with grants. The first one was actually on one of your recent board agendas, where the Public Defense Services is now going to get Title IV E money. Is everybody back up? Okay. So that's two point, almost $2.8 million in their grant fund for services for dependency. The next is also an item that you acted on in fiscal year 20. It's the Haba grant for elections, and this $352,000 we accepted a while back. It's going to be used to build the vault that didn't get completed, so it's going to be moving forward into fiscal year 21. And finally, there's a medical examiner grant for $2,000 that will be added to their 21 budget. We offset all those items by reductions to our special revenue contingency, so that was reduced by $3.1 million. Lastly, we have some shifts between appropriations or funds. So at the clerk of the court's office, they just reviewed their budgets and wanted to increase their spousal maintenance budget for non-recurring by $40,000, and they offset that by a reduction to their judicial enhancement budget. And then at Parks and Recreation, the boathouse project was supposed to complete in fiscal year 20. There'll be one bill, $16,715, that they expect to have to pay in '21, so they reduced their Lake Pleasant budget in '21 by that same amount and shifted those costs to be completed at Lake Pleasant in fiscal year '22. So again, $56,000 of adjustments there. Okay. So for the fifth year in a row, the tax rates are going to remain the same, so for the general fund, it's 1.4009. That would be for our general fund primary tax. The flood control district rate is going to remain flat at 1.1792, and the library district at .0556. So again, that is about the fifth year in a row that we had those same rates. Of this increase, 3.07% of the increase in the property tax levy is going to become from existing property. The other 2.74% is going to come from new property that was added to the rolls during fiscal year, or for fiscal year '21. If anybody has any questions along the way, please stop me out. I'd be happy to respond.
Is there any questions yet? These are, these are the slides I know that are extremely important for us, so is there any questions? Okay, hearing none. Go ahead. Oh, go ahead.
One question, and it's not pertaining to this particular slide, but at some point, and I don't think I missed it just yet, I know I was a few minutes late, but Cindy, I think it's important to weave into this conversation this morning about what COVID has done, and that when you look at the overall budget, that's including federal dollars, as I understand it, and that we spent monies on COVID prior to receiving federal dollars. So I certainly don't want to preempt you, but I think that's very important to look at, because we've never voted on something with a 3 in front of it when it comes to our annual budget.
Yeah, and we, we do have some slides upcoming, Steve, that absolutely we need to touch on that, so thank you for bringing it up. So Cindy, let's, let's go and let's get to those slides, and, and then we'll go for some questions at that point, too. Okay?
So real quickly then, on the next slide, just a reminder that we are still $140 million below what we could levy as our maximum levy, and in fiscal year 20, the primary tax rate was 11.43% of all the taxes that we, that were levied on property in Maricopa County.
Cindy, a question on that, and you might not have the answer, but I think that it's been asked before, being under our maximum levy, do you remember how many counties in Arizona are remaining under their maximum levy?
Mr. Chairman, I don't, don't know that answer, but I will get it for you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so to get to the question that Supervisor Chukri asked, so what, what has this pandemic done to our budget? Well, first of all, I wanted to remind everyone, we had about $399 million worth of coronavirus relief funds provided to Maricopa County. In our budget, we have for '21, we assume that $378 million of that will get spent in fiscal year '21. A couple weeks ago, you voted on the, the areas that these funds will be expended, so that will be essential public health, essential public health response, making county services and workspaces safe, homeless response and prevention, supporting small business, and uncover, or covering unplanned costs resulting from COVID-19. So that is new money added to our budget. It is one-time money, so it won't be annualized. It's not something that's going to be ongoing, but these are new funds for us, and I believe even in addition to this, our human services area received other funding outside of this fund, these funds, to help respond to this pandemic. And just to review, we went over these during the tentative budget presentation, but wanted to bring everything, bring it to your attention again, as a reminder, when we were building the budget back in January, things looked very different, and once we started to compile everything in March, we had everything all balanced, and then we looked, and we got new numbers from Mr. Pollak, our contract economist, and we had to make some adjustments. So on our operating budget side, we reduced our sales tax estimates for '21 by $50 million, the vehicle license tax by 11, our jail tax by 15, and then other revenues by $5 million, totaling almost $82 million. Then looking at the money that we were expecting to get in fiscal year 20, we also expected that to be $50 million down in sales tax, $4 million in vehicle license, 15 in jail, $20 million for other revenues, and then we had planned to do some transfers for fiscal year '21 that we ended up taking off the table, and we had some unplanned expenditures of $9 million. So really, we were looking at $124 million less for our non-recurring budget in fiscal year '21.
So, Mr. Chair?
Bill Gates.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So Cindy, make sure I'm understanding what you're saying here then. So if COVID-19 would not have come along, and the economic impact that we're having and that we anticipate having, you're saying that we would have had over $200 million more as a county to spend on the county's needs?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gates, yes.
Okay, and $200 million, what would you have to do, what sort of a change would you have to have in the property tax rate to generate $200 million?
Oh, boy, that's a good question. Because I'm just going to try to do some quick math in my head here. We get about, I want to say, $4 million for each, so what would that be? Not a dollar. Have a 50 cents, maybe?
You mean, you, are you asking like a percent, like, would we have to change the rate, and how we have to increase the rate as a percentage, Bill?
Or either one, yeah, percentage or the actual dollar amount, you know, the number of cents that the rate would have to be changed, either one I'd be interested in.
Yeah, I'm wanting to say 50 cents.
I don't mean to put you on the spot. I just, I just want people to understand the impact here that COVID-19's had on our fiscal situation.
Okay. Well, she thinks, she thinks it's, she's doing numbers in her head, she thinks it's around 50, 50 cents on top of what?
On top, yes.
Of what we're, what we're doing right now, which is, 50 cents doesn't sound like much, but it's a lot. With our tax rate, then we would have to, as a percentage, would that be somewhere?
Thirty, about 30% increase?
Okay, now remember, that we're just trying to do it off the top of your head. Let's, that's a good point, Bill. Let's, let's try to get you a real, a real number, because what, I think your question gets to the point that if we didn't do some of these things, and what we had on tap of supporting the county taxpayer in the way of services, we would have had to have gone to a much larger rate, correct?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Steve?
I, I think Mr. Gates is incredibly on point, and to your, to your statement, Mr. Chairman, if you look back historically, the times where the rate was increased, 50 cents would have been the high sign. And correct me if I'm wrong, Cindy, that some of this predates you in your current role, but I, I think we were, it was a modicum of an increase, the times that we did do it, we certainly weren't jumping it up by a dollar is the point I'm trying to make.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Chukri, in the most recent years, I remember a 4 cent increase on the primary and 2 on flood control.
Yeah, thank you.
And if I remember, and I remember, Steve, we even struggled with that back then of, so.
We always struggled with this. We're struggling with this today.
Yeah.
But, but when you're the fastest growing county, Mr. Chairman, for three consecutive years, and going forward, we're going to continue to be, there's a strain on the economy. Those services still have to happen, so I certainly believe, and we all understand what we're doing today, and it's, and the magnitude it presents, but we have to lead as well.
Yeah, I, I would love to know, I know we, everyone needs to participate in the census. All of us are going to be understanding what those numbers are going to represent. I wish I knew from the time, at least I took office and you took office, Steve, how many new residents are here, and it's not like they're bringing the, the services with them from Chicago, Los Angeles, New York. We have to provide those services with this tax base, so, yeah, we'll, we'll be interested in the next two years to see just how much officially Maricopa County has grown, but we've had to provide services in all that time.
Mr. Chairman, I would estimate it's probably over 600,000 people we've gone by in recent years, in the recent eight years or past eight years or so.
Yeah. Okay, Cindy?
Okay. So, let me go to the next slide. So what did we do to balance the budget? We did do reductions. So we got rid of 33 million of line item contingencies. We got rid of that transfer I mentioned on the previous slide. We had departments take a 2% reduction to their budget. We removed paper performance. All those reductions totaled $108 million on the operating side, so we put the difference, the $26.5 million in contingency for fiscal year '21, in case there are additional impacts. On the non-recurring side, we had a variety of one-time items that we reduced, future projects, existing projects, some of our reserves for the future projects, so all those things combined totaled $152 million, again, slightly more than what we needed to balance, so we took the $27.5 million and set that in contingency for unknown revenue shortfalls for fiscal So when we were, had the tentative budget adoption, we also asked at that time for some direction on how to proceed for fiscal year '21, and we had received direction from you to do a budget monitoring and adjustment process, where we asked departments initially for 3, 5, 10, and 15% reductions. Subsequently, we came back and said we'd, we would only be looking at the 3 and the 5% reductions. The very first line there, that you see the numbers in red, so when we were doing the budget in March, our very first estimate of the revenue shortfall we used in the budget. When we got numbers in April, the numbers were $30.1 million worse. Then the week of budget adoption, we got numbers that said it was going to be $46.5 million worse than what we already had in the tentatively adopted budget. At the end of May, that number changed to $41.5 million, and just last week, we actually got three estimates from Pollak, the most recent one being that we would be $10.8 million below the recommend, or, yeah, the recommended tentative budget that we have adopted. So just for context, a 3% reduction for our general and detention fund departments would be $38.8 million. If we're looking at 5%, that would be 46, I mean, sorry, 64.6 million. So actually, and we are continuing to compile and review all the submissions. They were due last Monday, so we're reviewing them for compliance with your criteria. However, at this point in time, we are not going to recommend that any action be taken because we are looking at the $10.8 million at the moment. That's something that we could maybe something that we could maybe manage, but we're going to monitor this monthly. And what we're suggesting is at the end of the first quarter, that we come back to you, tell you where we're at with the revenues, and make a recommendation for reductions if they're necessary at that time.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
So Cindy, just to clarify, we were about, according to Mr. Pollak, potentially, we will be about $10.8 million short in this new budget of meeting our, our needs.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Chukri, that's correct. So this 10.8 is, it's above the 82 million that we've already taken. So, so in essence, it would have been $92 million different from what we thought in March. But yeah, so the most recent estimates, and these are based on actual revenues that he has seen through April. So it's all the, the activity through April.
So, so Mr. Chairman, two, two observations. Observation number one is businesses reopened in May. And so we're hopeful that those, especially when it comes to vehicle licensing tax, which I understand vehicle sales in Arizona are very strong, from what I understand, with those being in the industry and having been in the industry. And then secondly, here is a critical moment for all of us as a board to understand, from the letters that we've received and others who are concerned about today's meeting, and us not lowering the rate. So what you, what you see us doing here with this, this one slide, the $82 million that Cindy just mentioned, that has been cut, is that we are cutting, we are eliminating positions. So you can't have it both ways, as we all understand, and cut the rate, cut employees, and still expect to give the services that our residents have come to expect and demand, which they should. So I want to make sure that we all focus on this, and those of our, our constituents that may be watching this, that, that this is really coming from both sides, that we're keeping our costs as flat as we can keep them, we're reducing actually our costs, number one. We're keeping the rate the same, even though some would like to have us reduce it. The only way this, this is going up is if new homes are built, or your value of your home has gone up. That's the long and short of it. So I think it's critical just to underscore that we have cut staff, we have cut costs, looks like we might have to do more. And so we're not trying to tax more. We're trying to do as much as we can with the revenues and, and resources we have.
Great points.
Mr. Chair?
Bill?
Yeah. Supervisor Chukri really nailed it there. I, I could not agree more. Just one thing to, one question for Cindy. This 10.8 million, and I, you know, at the risk of being accused of fear-mongering, what is Michael Pollak's, what's, what's baked into this estimate? Has he figured in a second wave of coronavirus? What's, what's figured into that number?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gates, I, he's modeling based on the current trend of revenue generation. I do not believe that there's a second wave factored into this number. He's only basing it on what activity he's seeing currently.
Okay, so we're, so what we're being asked to do here is vote on a budget that assumes that the, the worst of the economic impacts are over, and we certainly hope that's the case. But there's nothing in here that has figured, again, at Maricopa County, we tend to budget very conservatively. We haven't budgeted in for here another major economic shock, right?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gates, that's correct.
Okay, so, so those who would ask us to lower the tax rate are asking us to basically just hope that everything turns out well. I mean, that, that's, that's the real, again, it's nice to sit on the outside and make these sorts of suggestions. But what we're doing here is a reasonable approach, but it's clear to me, it is not an overly conservative approach. And I appreciate, I'm not, not questioning how you've done this, Cindy, but I just want to make sure that everyone who understands, everyone understands who's looking at this, this is not an overly conservative approach at all that we're taking to budgeting.
Well, I think we're trying.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I think we're trying to budget to reality as it stay, as it's right now. Look at that trend, that trend line of what I have been told, this has been a very difficult budget process on your chairman, you guys. I think I've let you guys know that because of the incredible changes that are occurring by the, not just by the month, week, or day, and we're trying to, we're trying to budget something, projecting out for the next year, which, I mean, that trend line, 30, then it goes to 46 and a half, then a month later it goes to 41.5 million impacts, then it's back at, back to 10.8 because we got the, we got the economy open. Then we vote on a mask policy that we all hope keeps the economy open with the limited thing that we can do. It's been very difficult. I really appreciate the thing about monitoring revenue monthly. Look at our state legislature. They, they, they immediately did pass what they call a skinny budget. And then they get to take a look and see their impacts after, you know, six months of being out of session. And we have to keep the services going up, you know, to us on a daily basis. My question to Cindy is, I think I ask this question all the time, when it comes to, because somebody was also saying, isn't it time to degrade government in the number of positions? Why, have we even caught, have we even employed as many people with this county? Have we caught up to 2,008 figures? I think we're still trying to do more with less. And my thing about the census, as Steve Chukri said, he thinks that number 600,000 new residents, and that's, you know, that, that's not going to 2008, that's going to what I think he thinks is 2010. Is that correct? Are we still on that trend?
No. Since we took, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, since we took office and.
Just for clarification.
Yeah.
Just a clarification is, you know, I'm saying since we were elected in 2013, I believe we've grown by, or close to.
Yeah, that's true. I asked you about what you thought it was when we were, when we were put in office. Cindy?
Mr. Chairman, I, I believe we have less FTE currently than we did in 2008.
Yeah, and remains so. So we've, we've already gone down that tack by using technology and investing in technology, investing in training in our people to provide more service to new, to the new people that are coming in and now participating, hopefully, in paying taxes to the county for those services. And we've kept it, kept it as low as we can. So thank you for the great questions right now, because every question you guys are asking is being asked daily on this, on the formation of this budget. Okay, Cindy?
So, all right. So to summarize then, on our operating budget, again, those are recurring costs year over year. We have 2 billion, 136 million, 889,975. That was in the tentative budget. It is the same for the final budget. Want to talk a little bit then about our non-recurring budget, just so we can remind everyone where those funds come from. So those funds really are, are fund balances. So those things are one-time in nature. Our fund balances are generated when we get more revenue than we have budgeted or anticipated, and we spend less than we have budgeted. So those amounts would fall to the bottom line and then become available for one-time spending. They become available for our pay-as-you-go capital plan. So those types of items in fiscal year 21 are going to be $934 million. So that's why we have those fund balances.
If somebody on the line has changed one of their settings with their phone, please be informed that it just caused some gigantic feedback. But go ahead, Cindy.
So those fund balances are available for our non-recurring spending, and plus also any fund balances in excess of this one-time spending. Those are the amounts that we have set aside for our reserves. It has set aside for our long-term obligations. It's the balance of our capital plan. So in addition to the fiscal year 21 spending, our plan is a five-year plan. So we have the resources set aside to complete those projects. So those are all things that are part of the remaining fund balance after this $934 million of expenditures. After today, there's one more event associated with the fiscal year 21 budget, and that will be our property tax levy and tax rate setting on August 17. And that concludes the presentation for the county's budget.
For the county's budget. Okay. Are there, are there any questions? Because we have just completed the Budget Office presentation on item number one. Any further questions or statements? Jack, I haven't heard, if you've had any questions, or Steve Gallardo, if you've had any questions, just making, making sure I'm giving you guys all the opportunity.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say thank you to Cindy and her entire staff for all the work they put into this, including yourself, Mr. Chairman, you and your, and Scott, and all the chiefs that have looked diligently over this entire budget. So thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Jack? Just making sure?
Hi, can you hear, can you hear me now?
I sure can. Thank you.
Okay, I just have the computer, so I'm the one that kind of screwed things up there from there to do. And I was hoping to be able to get my webcam operating, but I don't see it yet.
Well, you are, you are good, you're good to go, at least by voice. Do you have anything that you would like to comment on?
You know, I, I think that this process has been really very thorough and painful. I, I wish that we could make people understand how efficient the Maricopa County organization is, and what extremes we go to, to protect them as taxpayers. You know, the, the same people that are complaining now about wanting us to reduce our, our rate are the people that are saying that we're overreacting to the pandemic. And, you know, for those of us that really get to hear all the, all the stats every day, it, it can be pretty scary.
Yeah, I agree.
Mr. Chairman?
Steve Chukri.
If Mr. Sellers has done, and I don't think Mr. Gallardo had much to say. I saw him doing all the math in his head, which was very impressive, Steve. But the, you know, if you, if you look at this in a holistic way, to what Mr. Sellers said, to what we've all said, and have been saying, if you go back to 2012, the budgeting we would do, well, I shouldn't say we, before our time, was we would have these large surpluses. We had hundreds, I believe, millions of dollars sitting in the bank, undisturbed, that we gave back to the taxpayers the first year we were elected by keeping the rate flat, not raising it as some wanted us to do. And we would have these, these, these huge account balances that we would then go build stuff with. We aren't doing that anymore. And for, for crying out loud, we took a one-time jail and turned it into office space. We are trying to be as entrepreneurial, as innovative, and as agile as we can be, as the, as, just as the private sector is. So when we get these letters and saying, you're overtaxing us, you're doing these things from these various groups, I haven't gotten necessarily a lot of emails from my constituents, but from, from these groups, saying taxes are very, very high, we have to put things into perspective. Why is Maricopa County growing the fastest than anywhere else? Why are we growing 76% faster than Clark County, Nevada, who's the second fastest-growing county? There is a reason. And as we've always said, with opportunity comes responsibility. That's what we have here today, is responsible. And, and I don't, I, I don't like to pay higher taxes than anyone else. But that's why we're keeping the rate flat. That's why we're trying to keep this, you know, what they say, is slow and steady, and steady is fast. That's what we are trying to do, I believe, with this budget, all the while, to Mr. Gates's point, trying to deal with the pandemic, and trying to be conservative in our approach, and not be overly saying, hey, we may need an extra piggy bank in case things go south in the coming months. We are being as responsible as we can. We're cutting budgets, we're cutting staff, we're doing all the things you should in good governance, and as a good government. So I'm very proud of this. I wish we could cut the rate, we just aren't there. And I applaud you, Mr. Chairman, for your work, Cindy. It doesn't come any better than you and your team, and so we're very grateful to you.
Thank you, Steve. Bill?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just echo what everyone said. Thank you, Clint, for all your work on this. I can't imagine how challenging this has been to have these projections rolling all over the place. But you've done a great job of managing this, working with the other electeds, working with the departments that, that roll up to the Board of Supervisors. So thank you for that. Cindy, you are a rock star. I mean, there's no other way to put it. You are so good at this, and we need your expertise now more than ever. So grateful you're here. I've dealt with a lot of budget directors over the years from my city of Phoenix time, and I put you at the top of the heap. And we're, we're just so fortunate to have you. And again, just to piggyback on what everyone said, it, I really wanted to lower the rate this year. I really did. I felt like it was something that we were going to be in a position to do. But the numbers simply don't support it now. And that's not because of any mismanagement whatsoever by Maricopa County. It is by the black swan of all black swans, COVID-19. So we have no choice. And for those who would ask us to lower our tax rate at this time, when we do not know where we're headed, would be the pinnacle of irresponsibility. I'm unwilling to do that, and I know everyone on this board is unwilling to do it. I would love to do it. I'd love to give ice cream to everyone. But we cannot do it. And we would be roundly criticized if we lowered the tax rate now and then were faced with a gaping deficit. So that is simply the answer to those who would ask us to do it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank, thank you, Bill. And before I turn to Fran McCarron to read a couple of things into the, into the record due to public commentary about this with concerns, thank you for touching on how hard this has been. I was angling, I think you guys know that. I was angling to try to, to cut the, the property tax rate at the, at the start of this. And meanwhile, keeping everything whole and keeping our, our people happy within their jobs. I was starting to have meetings, face-to-face meetings, with all the electeds and all their departments, finding out what they truly need in this fiscal year. I was enjoying the meetings and getting to learn a little bit more about what has changed since the last time I was chairman four years ago. Was, had some great feedback from the face-to-face with the, the county attorney, Jeff Fine, what their needs were, the presiding judge. And then COVID struck, and look where we're at now. You guys can't even come here and attend a meeting due to social distancing. And my, my plan was thwarted because I want to keep people safe. And we still got to hear them. They could call my office at any point. They know that. They were calling Cindy. She did still have face-to-face meetings as much as she could. And here we are. So I appreciate you guys knowing, some of you have been chairman before, and there's nothing like talking to all the agencies face-to-face, finding out what we need to provide as the, as the, as the authority when it comes to powers of the purse. And this is where we're at right now. And I feel strongly that we're putting, getting a budget with a tax rate put forth that's, that's, that's good going into the future, of which we not know. So, Madam Clerk, are there any speaker slips for these Maricopa County hearings?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have received two letters, which I can read. One is from ATRA, and one is from a group called CREED, which is Commercial Real Estate Executives for Economic Development. The first one is from ATRA.
I will ask Fran to read these into the record so we know specifically what their position is.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Arizona Tax Research Association annually reviews the budget of every county, along with those of local governments in Arizona. This letter is in response to the proposed $23 million increase in county primary and secondary property taxes in fiscal year 2021 in the tentative budget. At a time of record job losses with more than half a million unemployment claims statewide, ATRA respectfully requests that you reconsider your plan to impose a tax increase on Maricopa County property taxpayers. As you know, when property As you know, when property values rise and tax rates stay the same, taxes increase at the same rate as the growth in value. The 5.8% growth in the county's taxable values are the result of a 3.1% increase in the value of existing property and 2.7% in new construction. By keeping the tax rates constant, the county's primary and secondary property taxes will generate an additional $41 million in taxes, the majority of which will come from increased values on existing property. During the tentative budget hearing, county staff accurately stated that the county has not changed its tax rates over the last five years. While it is true, doing so resulted in a tax increase in each of those five years due to rising property values. In fact, by keeping tax rates the same, the county will levy $201 million more in property taxes this year than it did in FY 2016. Of that total, $129 million was the result of the increase in value on existing property. It would be one thing if this levy increase was paramount in maintaining operations. Your budget suggests this is not the case. The general fund proposed budget maintains a fund balance of $166 million and $1.5 billion in total funds. We are all painfully aware of the economic devastation resulting from the government shutdown of the economy. Many Arizona businesses and individuals are desperately trying to maintain a bridge to a full economic recovery. State and local governments should be doing everything possible at this time to help taxpayers survive this crisis and remain contributing taxpayers in the future. Of the $741 million in primary and secondary property taxes the county is on course to levy this year, allowing taxpayers to keep $23 million of their own money should go a long way during this pandemic. If you have any questions, there is a phone number. The second letter is...
Well, that was signed by...
I'm sorry. That was signed by Kevin McCarthy of Arizona Tax Research Association.
Okay, thank you.
The second letter is from Timothy Lawless, President of CREED, which is Commercial Real Estate Executives for Economic Development. Pardon me. Dear members of the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors, CREED is a consortium of property owners across multiple sectors that represent 5,000-plus small business tenants and 70 million square feet of Arizona property. Is opposed to the proposed Maricopa County property tax levy increases considered Monday for the following reasons. Number one, the increase is far in excess of about $23 million of the Truth in Taxation county primary and secondary taxes for the proposed fiscal year 2021 budget amount outlined in state statute, which specifically requires a vote of your board to exceed and comes at a time when there is far less ability to pay for all Maricopa County residents. This excessive increase is exacerbated, given that property values have increased by 5.8%, which will lead to $41 million more in revenue to operate your budget, even if rates are kept the same, let alone increased as proposed. It would significantly increase Arizona's property tax burden in Maricopa County, which for the business community, due to the high commercial assessment ratio, 18%, is already among the most uncompetitively high relative burdens in the United States worse. This will harm our continued economic recovery in the throes of COVID-19. And the tax increase is particularly unfair for small business owners who pay much more of the commercial property tax burden. This will harm small businesses' job creation and drive those jobs and capital investments to other states. Please oppose this property tax increase, as it is ill-timed, is unfair to small businesses, and will harm our state economy along with job creation as we are struggling with the pandemic. Most importantly, keeping rates the same will still result in more revenue for county government to meet its obligations, primarily due to recent valuation increases on existing property plus new construction. Thank you for your studied consideration, Timothy Lawless, President of CREED.
Great. At this point, is there anyone else that you can see? No?
Mr. Chairman, Madam Clerk, there are no hands raised at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deb.
Mr. Chairman.
Steve.
I believe we can respond to this. We're having a hearing here. So the interesting observations and discussions I don't take lightly by both of those letters. I want to take the first letter and mention that we can't have it both ways. I know that ATRA was wanting to limit any year of your growth, I think it could go be about 5%. And the idea, if you follow it logically, that if homes were devalued, whereas our rates went below what they are today, you would have less tax revenue and provide less services, in theory. So if we're asked to cut the rate as values are going up, then are we allowed to raise the rate when values go down? Logically, right, that would make sense. Or do we just have to cut our staff even more, cut departments, et cetera? With the economic development letter, a group that wrote, "We have," as I understand it, in recent months, even with COVID-19, had remarkable increase in our plans being submitted to our Planning and Development Office. Permits are at an all-time high. So does the logic still follow through that if we were to eliminate planning and development, that these economic development folks would not be able to go and build new buildings? I mean, you have to look at this and try to strike a balance of, yes, what's a purist thought, and what is reality? And so I don't, I'm not making any type of assertions, nor am I casting any ill-will against both of those letters, but which is it? And what about the legislature's role here? Mr. Chairman, you have repeatedly said, and rightfully so, about the unfunded mandates upon this county, some for a while that was not placed on any other of the 14 counties in Arizona, that we still have to do. We still have to pay for services that have been handed down from the legislature, which we do, because we are an arm of that government. But I would like to see at times like this that same spirit of cooperation that they're asking of us in these letters to be asked of our friends and colleagues at the legislature, because this is part of what we have to do and what we have to shoulder. So I just want to make sure we're clear on how this can work when values go down, when home values and property values go down.
Great salient points, Steve, that we've run into over the years. Thank you for bringing up my constant drumbeat about getting rid of unfunded mandates that we have to and direct cost shifts that we have to deal with every year that still do not change. And that is money coming out of the Maricopa County taxpayer pocket going to fund state functions. And you know, I've talked to several, I've talked to governor's staffs, I've talked to legislators in my district and others, I've talked to Speaker, the Houses, Senate Presidents, all of which always, when I've talked to them, said, "Yes, we know that, it's unfair. And yes, we know that we started these types of things in the last bad economy that they still have not unbridled us with." So I appreciate that, because that is a real amount of money that the county taxpayer has paid, that all we have to do is figure out how to fund it every year. So thank you for bringing that up. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. Bill?
Yes, not much that needs to be added to what Mr. Chukri said, but let me just add a couple of things. First of all, I respect Mr. McCarthy and Mr. Lawless greatly, so I appreciate them taking the time to send those letters in. Mr. Lawless talks about the assessment ratio being unfair. I'd be happy to work with him on that issue, but this board has nothing to do with the assessment ratios, and that's something that I would argue needs to be addressed by the legislature. So that's not this board's responsibility, and it doesn't change what we need to do in this budget process. Secondly, he also referenced, I didn't catch, I think he said like 5.7% in values. Well, Mr. Lawless and Mr. McCarthy certainly know that when Prop 117 was passed many years ago, it capped the increase to 5%. So they know that. And so to the extent that it should be limited, it has been limited by the voters. So let's be honest about what's going on here. And finally, just to add to Mr. Chukri and you, Mr. Chairman, the unfunded mandates that we have here, and we know now for successive years, both the governor's office and legislative leadership have said that they would take juvenile, Department of Juvenile Corrections off of our plate, and they didn't do it, and I understand that. They did a skinny budget, but they got to do that. And so now that, as you both mentioned, that responsibility is on our taxpayers. Do these groups not want us to cover that? We have to. Again, as I've been saying recently, the buck is stopping with this Board of Supervisors, so we have to lead on this, and that's why I'm going to be supportive of this budget. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great. Thank you, Bill.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to belabor this, but that number that Mr. Gates just referred to, Cindy, do you happen to know what that is? How many millions alone of the juvenile?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Chukri, it's slightly over $6 million.
I thought.
That one's slightly over $6 million, but there's still others that remain. And I was just wondering if you have a combined total in your head, you know, let's say all tax and some of these things that need to be looked at. Do you think you have a number there?
Mr. Chairman, I believe it's over $200 million.
Over $200 million?
I'm going to say in the 260s.
Of which some of that absolutely rightly should be local cost share, but those percentages can change, should be changed. Judges' salaries, the whole thing. So meanwhile, thank you, guys, for that. Any other things before we consider we go into item number two? Okay, hearing none. We will now consider item number two regarding the Truth in Taxation proposed tax levy. Is there, and number two, Truth in Taxation motion to levy, is there a motion regarding this item?
Am I looking at the right page here? I'm looking at a page to adopt the 2021 Maricopa County budget?
No. What we are looking for is a proposed primary tax levy. Hold on one second, let me make sure we stay in the lines. Fran, is that true?
I got it.
Well, one second.
Mr. Sellers, it is the informal meeting pages that we're looking at right now, informal meeting.
Okay.
Got it.
I'm there.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the proposed primary tax levy increase of $18,565,283, and direct the clerk of the board to send the appropriate documents to the Property Tax Oversight Commission.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Sellers.
Yes.
Supervisor Chukri.
Aye.
Supervisor Gates.
Aye.
Supervisor Gallardo.
Aye.
Chairman Hickman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. We will now adjourn as the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors and convene as the Directors of the various County Improvement Districts, and convene the public hearing for all of the districts and their respective budgets, which are listed on the attachment. Madam Clerk, are there any speaker slips for the Maricopa County Improvement Districts? Or do we need to hear the presentation first? No, we're all good? Okay. Are there any speakers on this agenda item?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Clerk, there are no speakers online.
Thank you, Deb. Then we will then go ahead and move on to the next agenda item, which is a public hearing on County Improvement Districts for the year 2021 budgets. Is this where Cindy makes any type of presentation, or do we go?
Mr. Chairman, I have no presentation for the improvement districts.
Okay.
The next presentation is the flood control district.
Okay. We will now adjourn as the various Board of Directors of the County Improvement Districts and convene as the Directors of the Flood Control District of Maricopa County to consider the public hearing and the Truth in Taxation hearing regarding the Flood Control District budget. So Cindy, please proceed with that presentation.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the Flood Control District budget had no changes from the tentative budget. So the budget that's being proposed for the final budget is $127,137,866.
I like these types of presentations. That's a good one. Thank you for the presentation. Madam Clerk, are there any speaker slips regarding the Flood Control District hearings?
Mr. Chairman, there are none here, and I do not, Deb, are there any online?
Mr. Chairman, Madam Clerk, no, there are no hands raised at this time.
Okay, then. We will now consider item F2 regarding the Truth in Taxation proposed tax levy for the Flood Control District. Is there a motion regarding this item?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Sellers.
I move that we approve, I move that we approve proposed secondary tax levy increase of $3,183,302, and direct the clerk of the board to send the appropriate documents to the Property Tax Oversight Commission.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers or Vice Chair Sellers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Sellers.
Aye.
Supervisor Chukri.
Aye.
Supervisor Gates.
Aye.
Supervisor Gallardo.
Aye.
Chairman Hickman.
Aye. Thank you. We will now adjourn as the Flood Control District and convene as the Directors of the Library District to consider the public hearing and the Truth in Taxation hearing regarding the Library District budget. Ms. Geltz, please proceed with the presentation.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the Library District had no changes to the tentative budget, to the one that we're proposing for the final budget totaling $36,676,46.
Thank you, Cindy. Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers for the Library District hearings?
None here, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Schaefer?
Mr. Chairman, Madam Clerk, there are no hands raised at this time.
Thank you very much. We will now consider item L2 regarding the Truth in Taxation proposed tax levy for the Library District. Is there a motion for this item?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Sellers.
I move that we approve the proposed secondary tax levy increase of $756,858, and direct the clerk of the board to send the appropriate documents to the Property Tax Oversight Commission.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second? Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Sellers.
Aye.
Supervisor Chukri.
Aye.
Supervisor Gates.
Aye.
Supervisor Gallardo.
Aye.
Chairman Hickman.
Aye. We will now adjourn as the Library District and convene as the Directors of the Stadium District to consider the public hearing regarding the Stadium District budget. Ms. Geltz, please proceed with this presentation.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the Stadium District had no changes between the tentative and final budget. The proposed final budget is $9,000,000. the tentative and final budget. The proposed final budget is $9250,000.
Great. Madam Clerk, are there any speaker slips for the stadium district hearing?
None here, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Schaefer?
Mr. Chairman, Madam Clerk, there are no hands raised at this time.
So, being that there are no changes from the tentative budget, that does not call for a vote because we're same thing?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the stadium district does not require a truth and taxation hearing because it does not levy a property tax.
Very good. Thanks for that clarification. Okay. With that being, I'm sorry, was there a question?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Steve Chukri. Just in the event that we have obviously this relationship since 2018 now on the stadium, the 9.2 million, it might be worth, if Cindy could just say, what does that budget really entail, since our role and responsibilities have changed just to those who may be wondering?
Okay. Questions? Cindy?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Chukri, so there are two components to this, or two large components. Besides, the 250,000 is the standard payment that we were going to get every year from the team, and that would be to support any kind of expenses that we may incur still associated with the district. The other amounts of money that are reflected here are, first of all, the car rental surcharge that we still collect, and then we actually, it's just a pass through. We have to collect it based on the statute, and then we pass that over to the tourism authority. The other amount that's reflected here has to do with a payment. So, we still have a fund balance in the ballpark operations fund that will be paid out to the team, I believe, during this next year.
Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. That answer your question? Okay. That being said, I don't see any other hands going up. So, this meeting is adjourned, and we will proceed to our special meeting. We will now convene the special meeting regarding the adoption of the budget, starting with the Board of Supervisors. Is there a motion for item number one, the FY 2021 budget for Maricopa County?
Mr. Chairman?
Vice Chair Sellers?
Now that I'm on the right page, I move that we adopt the fiscal year 2021 Maricopa County budget in the amount of $3,717,449 by total appropriation for each department, fund, and appropriation unit group listed in the TAP schedules. This amount represents no change from the tentative budget, and that we adopt the five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2021 through 2025. In addition, approve the attached executive summary.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Is, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. This time, there's not a roll call vote. I will just call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We will now recess the special meeting of the Board of Supervisors and convene the special meeting for the county improvement districts. Is there a motion for the FY 2021 budgets for the various improvement districts?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Vice Chairman?
I move, I move that we adopt the fiscal year 2021 budgets for the county improvement districts per the fiscal year 2021 budget schedules entitled "Direct Assessment Special Districts" and "Street Lighting Improvement Districts."
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We will now adjourn the special meeting of the improvement districts and convene the special meeting for the flood control district. Is there a motion for the FY 2021 budget for the flood control district?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Vice Chairman?
I move that we adopt the fiscal year 2021 budget for the flood control district in the amount of $127,137,866 by total appropriation for each fund and appropriation unit group. This amount represents no change from the tentative budget.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Do I have a second?
Second.
I beat Mr. Gallardo.
Let's just give it to Supervisor Chukri. I need to see some other participation too in this, so. Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We will now adjourn the special meeting of the flood control district and convene the special meeting for the library district. Is there a motion for the FY 2021 budget for the library district?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Vice Chairman?
I move that we adopt the fiscal year 2021 budget for the library district in the amount of $36,676,46 by total appropriation for each fund and appropriation unit group for the library district. This amount represents no change from the tentative budget.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Bill Gates that time. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We will now adjourn the special meeting of the library district and convene the special meeting for the stadium district. Is there a motion for the FY 2021 budget for the stadium district?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Vice Chairman?
I move that we adopt the fiscal year 2021 budget for the stadium district in the amount of $9250,000 by total appropriation for each fund and appropriation unit group for the stadium district. This amount represents no change from the tentative budget.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. I will call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We will now adjourn the special meeting of the stadium district and reconvene the special meeting for the Board of Supervisors. So, thanks, everybody, for getting through that. Thank you, Cindy, very much for all the hard work. It represents a lot of work, Fran. Thank you for getting this all together for us. You guys always make us look really smart up here, so thank you for that. I would like to call, do we need to shift over to anybody? Deb?
Ms. Schaefer?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I had to find my mute button. Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have Mr. Adrian Fontes on the phone, and we have also Ray Valenzuela and Scott Jarrett.
Okay. Thank you for all joining us today. We are on item number two, a presentation and adoption of the Election Day and Emergency Voting Plan. My assumption, then, it will be led off by Scott Jarrett. So, Scott, you are the one making the presentation to us to start?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. And before we start the presentation, I believe Mr. Adrian Fontes, Recorder Fontes, is on the line, and he wanted to say a few brief words.
Okay. Adrian, welcome. Would you like to say something before we get started on this presentation?
Yes, very briefly, Mr. Chairman, and I do appreciate it. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, what you're about to hear is something I think that is going to set a precedent and get to what Mr. Chukri has hoped for for some time, and that is to get us in class. I am going to occasionally briefly mute, because I think I'm getting a little bit of feedback on my own phone here. So, you'll forgive me if it's a little bit choppy in this presentation.
Okay.
Just a brief bit of history on what our voting patterns look like in Maricopa County before I get into it. In many folks, look, we don't have to go too far back to look at the massive and amazing changes that the election department and the recorder's office paid to accommodate folks during the 2020 PPE. We had to literally recreate the entire election in about five days, and thanks to Scott and his crew, and Ray, and the folks over in our office of the IT department, we managed to do what I think was clearly impossible, and that is completely redefine what the election was going to look like in less than a week. And so, everyone who worked on that election deserves kudos. And I think we're going to end up with the single most accessible election in the primary and general that Maricopa County has ever seen. And if we want to really talk about that, accessibility during the time of COVID-19 is really the most important thing, I think, that we need to pay attention to. I'll put the permanent early vote list and ballot by mail aside, as that is a very solid and secure program that we've been using in Maricopa County for a couple of decades now. Our partners at Run Back Elections, which are kind of right across the river, right here in Maricopa County, do a phenomenal job. Our staff has increased our security profile, and our IT department, in conjunction with the United States Postal Service, have a tracking system now that is really, I think, second to none in the United States. So, ballot by mail is obviously encouraged, and it's important, but in-person voting remains a vital and critical part of our election profile. So, I want to go back very quickly to what we used to do in Maricopa County, and it's important for context. During the 2016 primary and general election, not the PPE, and in many elections before that, during the 23 days, not to include emergency voting, which would take us to 27 days before Election Day, but of the 23 days before Election Day, we had give or take three to four places where people could actually vote in early voting if they want to vote in person. If you do very rough math, you're somewhere around 100 places, days, for folks to be able to vote. In 2018, when the board decided to work with us and make vote centers a part of our plan, we had 40 of those available on Election Day, which gave Election Day voters 40 options, not just the one polling place, but they had 41 options, places to choose an election day. We also made a much more robust investment in early voting, and that was by increasing from just four locations to about, weeks out, we went to about 10, and then we increased that further. That gave us somewhere in the neighborhood of about 250-day locations, or location days, where voters could vote in person if they wanted. Right now, you're going to see something that I think is going to be phenomenal, and I think we're going to end up setting a model here for the rest of the country. I'll be so bold as to say that. And that comes from innovation, and that innovation comes from a little bit of investment from this board, a little bit of hard work from the folks in our election department, our IT department at the recorder's office, the early voting folks, working closely with our stakeholders and partners outside of the government. But at the same time, none of this would have happened if we hadn't decided to roll up our sleeves, and I'll just say it, put political differences aside and work together. I'm very proud, Chairman, of the work that Supervisor Gates and I were able to engage in by bringing our election department and recorder's office closer into statutory alignment with the way that the laws in Arizona were designed, so we could have that balancing act of different branches of government helping to run these elections. The bipartisan work that we've all engaged in is going to be critical to making sure that our citizens can have the faith they need to have in our elections, and that's based a lot on the fact that a lot of our senior managers, senior leaders in the election department and in the recorder's office have been doing this work for a long, long time. And we've put aside our differences to work together. You all have given us resources that we needed badly for quite some time, and even still, based on the discussions and earlier meetings that you've come in and out of today, I'll just put this side note in there, our responsibility to the taxpayers and their money is significant. We in-sight, we created site books on campus, in our office, our IT department, created site books that have not only decreased the number of provisional ballots significantly, but we've eliminated the possibility of double voting in Maricopa County, which had existed prior. And so, that's an incredible security feature and incredible efficiency in expenditure of our dollars. We also built, employed less permanent employees in San Diego County Election Department, which is about half our size, even with the increases in staff that we've had based on our new partnership. So, we're doing things correctly, we're doing things efficiently, and we're moving directly towards those goals that you all have set up because we've been able to work together. In 2020, when you look at our early voting plan and you look at the election day plan, those two work together the way that the board and the recorder's office is working together. We've increased the number of voters in Maricopa County significantly, but when it comes to access, again, I'll circle back and finish up. Well, nobody will have anticipated what we were able to do, particularly in the face of the crisis that we've got right now. We will have voting locations in places that folks are very familiar with. I won't steal the thunder of the directors as they discuss this. We're going to have no less than about 50 locations, five zero locations, which will be vote anywhere vote centers, open for at least two weeks prior to Election Day, including nearly 100 on Election Day. We're looking at something close to 700 opportunities for voters to come and vote in person, of course, after presenting proper identification. And what that means is we'll have a lot more spaces and a lot more places, which will be much larger than usual, with more resources, both human resources and technological resources than usual. Every vote will be cast on a paper ballot, and any of those pre-printed ballots sent out will be printed right here in the United States of America. I'm excited about what we've done, improving the voter experience. I'm excited about what we've done, making sure that access is number one, but we do have all the accountability and transparency necessary. I'm proud to be working in partnership with this board, because making sure the voters get what they need is obviously all of our goal. I think we're going to have a good, good election, not just moving into August 4th, but then moving forward into the fall. I appreciate the opportunity to work with you all and to continue to move forward, improving what we came here to improve, and that is the election services that we provide to our voters. So, thank you for giving me just a moment. I hope I didn't feel too much of a punch from the directors, who will be moving forward with the rest of the plans. I've approved the early voting plan for whatever Ray's going to be referring to there, and I'm very, very hopeful that you all will approve the work that Scott Jarrett and a lot of the folks over on the election department have done for and with you and your staff. We're a great team working together, and we put everything else aside for the voters. I'm excited, I'm proud, and I will be at this point, Mr. Chairman, and let the professionals do the work that they were hired to do. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Jack?
Yeah, I just want, while we have Adrian on, I'd just like to say thank you for all the work that our directors have done. People that have come to me with serious questions or serious concerns about what we're doing, if they get the answers directly from Scott or Ray, they are always satisfied. So, they're doing great work, and I really appreciate you working with us to make this happen. So, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. And Adrian, just wanted to say, that was more than a moment, Adrian. But I appreciate you being here, and you represent quite a large group of staff that have been working hard, and I appreciate that also as we go into this next election. So, I appreciate you being here with your staff. So, I will call up Mr. Scott Jarrett to lead us into now the presentation of Election Day and the Emergency Voting Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. And we do have a slide deck, and I'm going to show my screen here. Trying to pull it up right now. Are you able to see the slide deck, Mr. Chairman?
I can, and that's good enough. You've got some information on the right column that we can see, or at least I can see, but I can see your slides.
Okay, great. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we appreciate your time this morning in allowing us to discuss the elections department's plans for the upcoming August primary. us to discuss the elections department's plans for the upcoming August primary. Over the past several months, we've seen that COVID-19 has presented election departments across the nation and jurisdictions, and for specific election departments themselves, significant challenges as they've attempted to host their presidential preference elections and their primary elections. We ourselves had firsthand experience in March, just over three months ago, when we had to redesign our entire Democratic presidential preference election in five days, a process that took us nearly a year to plan for in advance. And while staff in the election department were under significant amount of pressure, we were able to deliver a relatively smooth, what we feel a successful election for the Democratic voters in Maricopa County in March. One of those successes we gained was insight in how to prepare and host an election in a COVID-19 environment. And we've taken those lessons learned and those insights and applied them to our planning efforts and strategies for the upcoming primary. And it was important for us, as election officials, to be able to provide voters with the option to choose how they want to participate in the upcoming August primary, whether that be to vote early at home by mail, or to vote in person early, or to take that early ballot, drop it off at one of our drop boxes, or one at our vote centers, or whether that be to vote in person on Election Day. And in addition to that being one of the primary drivers, allowing the voters to choose the option in which they wanted to vote, we had really four principles that drove all of the decisions that we made, and that was to ensure that we could provide a reliable, a secure, and accessible, and a safe election for Maricopa County voters. And we're confident that that's what we're able and what we've been able to do with these plans. So with COVID-19 and with these plans, there are several different factors that we've been having to consider and challenges that we've had to overcome as we've prepared these plans. And I discussed many of these with you in early May at that meeting that we had to discuss and where you offered us additional time to prepare these plans. And some of those challenges are, and I'll briefly summarize them again here today, is just having enough paper and ballots to be able to anticipate and be able to respond to early ballot requests. Mr. Valenzuela will discuss this in more detail, but we have had a significant uptick in the number of voters that are requesting early ballots. Also, another challenge that we had to overcome was the use of our existing polling locations. Many were not available for us to be able to use for the upcoming August primary election. And those that were available, they didn't meet our safety guidelines that we had partnered with and collaborated with the county department of public health to ensure that we had physical distancing requirements. Also, another challenge that we had that we're facing as we're planning for this August election is our poll workers themselves. We wanted to ensure that we had sufficient poll workers and experienced poll workers to be working in our polling locations. One of the first ways that elections departments and polling locations have challenges is if we don't have those experienced poll workers. We could provide days and days of training, but really that hands-on experience in working in a polling location, checking ID, working with our site votes, answering voters' questions, all of those things, it's incredibly valuable to have that hands-on experience working in an election before. And that's what this new revised election model is providing, and we're able to achieve getting those 1,000 poll workers versus 3,600, which would have been needed in the earlier models that we were considering. Also, another challenge we're facing was getting enough cleaning supplies and personal protective gear that we could provide all of our polling locations to keep them safe, to keep them equipped with those types of equipment, that we could wipe down frequently touched surfaces according to those guidelines that we established with the county department of public health. So those were the factors that we are facing as we prepared for these plans. And now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Valenzuela to discuss some key election dates, some voter registration figures, how we're keeping elections secure, and then also how we're making it easier for voters to request ballots by mail.
Great, thank you, Scott. Welcome, Ray.
Hello, Chairman, members of the board. And as we did in our previous planned presentation for the PPE, I want to reiterate that although these are two separate plans, they absolutely positively can exist without each other. So I just want to, you know, continue to reemphasize the great work that Scott did, especially in the presidential preference to rally within those five days. But starting with the early voting, these are some of the key dates, and this is mostly for the public, if you will, to the extent that it shows, again, those key dates. And I want to point out the very first one, June 15th, which is behind us, which is military and overseas voters. We actually mailed out 3,518 military and overseas ballots already, and we beat that deadline. It's no later than June 15th. We actually beat it by three days. So we continue to improve our processes, but it's a substantial amount of voters, and that's the one I want to focus on again. I always say it, anybody deserves the right to vote, it's our military voters who protect democracy. So I wanted to point out that the election has begun. A lot of people, you see that August 4th Election Day, that's indeed the election day, but we started election, and actually, the first day we mailed out these ballots, we actually got five back the same day, because they go out electronically. So it's really good, speaks well to Maricopa County and our process. The next important ones, and I won't go through them all, but I do want to point out the next upcoming July 6th voter registration deadline, which we are promoting heavily to make sure voters or individuals know they can get out there and they need to do that by that July 6th date. Next slide. Let's see if I can. Scott, are you able to move that to the next slide?
Trying to work through that right now, Ray.
Okay. But when it comes up, I'll start speaking to it, what it is is the voter registration and early voting data. And as Director, Co-Director Jared mentioned, we have seen quite a bit of increase, and I want to kind of bring that up to your attention because we've literally, it's, permanent early voting has become so fluid lately, meaning we, and I'll speak a little bit in one more slide down, about our online permanent early voting portal, but it's, we are literally by the second getting new people voters. The snapshot we took for this slide was just a day ago, and we've already changed from 74.3 to 74.5, which is substantial, even though it's only 0.2%. But permanent early voting has gone up. You'll see the slide that it speaks to how many of the registration, how many folks have gone. The gist of it is that we have increased from just December, and we've been tracking a lot more further back, but just December to get a good picture with the PP, presidential preference in play, we've increased by 134,000 permanent early votings just within this last couple of months. And I'll give you some numbers that aren't shown here. There are 662,000 Republicans on peal, 620 Democrats, 15,000 Libertarians, and 498,000 Independents, for a grand total of 1,795, or we're rounded up to 1.8 million. So it's substantial growth, 134,000. So something that is really showing that the constituency out there, even if it's COVID-related, is heating the options that are available to them. Next slide, Scott. This is speaking to the, obviously, the voting by mail and the different process. We, I'll briefly go through this because I know you want to get to the Election Day plan, but what I do want to emphasize is we did create an infographic for this fourth section, voting by mail. A lot of folks are not understanding the vote by mail process, are not understanding that it is secure, that it's verifiable, that it's transparent. So we kind of have this noted here when it talks to only registered voters can receive a ballot, meaning we actually have to vet that voter, including their address, before they even get sent a ballot. And a lot of people aren't aware, we actually do that verification of address. Even once they register, after they register, 90 days before, we actually are verifying everybody's registration through mailers, if you will, on 90-day notice. The other thing is 100% signature verification, which is, should be known, and we need, and we are doing a better job to make sure people are aware that that's one of the key security features. And of course, our staff being trained by forensic experts, affiliated forensic laboratories, to be exact, and they're an agency leader in the signature verification process, they actually are used by the FBI in investigations, so they provide training. And actually, this week, all of our staff are going back through that training once again. So there's a lot of security features that build out the vote by mail as being, again, having that validity that it should have and the security that it should. In-person voting, again, checks and balances, bipartisan poll workers for the in-person early voting and the poll, polling place, Election Day, secure transport, partnership with ACTIC Sheriff's Office. ACTIC, actually, the Arizona Counterterrorism Information Center, is actually has an individual onboard with us. They're stationed at our office here at Mc Tech during the election cycle. So again, another feature. Tabulation, of course, is a shared oversight by the board and the recorder, so we emphasize that. And of course, it's certified equipment, both by the election assistant commission at a federal level and S. Secretary of State at the state level. Again, I'll jump through here, there's party observers present when we're tabulating. We have access, badge access only to our tabulation room. The equipment itself has an air gap or it's hardwired. And again, the biggest thing is that we have live camera feed and the logic inaccuracy and hand count. So those are all checks.
Yes, Supervisor Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry to interrupt you. You were on a nice run there, Ray, but just a question, because I've been asked about this, on the observers at Mc Tech. With social distancing, we know you guys are doing a great job with that and reconfiguring things with social distancing. My question to you is, are the observers going to have the same access? And actually, and I can ask it of Scott on Election Day as well, but at Mc Tech, will observers have the same access to what's going on at Mc Tech as they would in any other election?
Chairman Gates, or I'm sorry, Chairman Hickens, Supervisor Gates, the answer is yes, absolutely. We are, we have protocols in place whereby we are mandating the mask, we have the temperature check stations, we have everybody, whether they're visitors, staffs, or observers, and we also have masks to issue out if they don't want to bring their own, but we will require that for participation. But they are, ballot tabulation center is large enough to allow for that physical distancing, and we have protocols so that they can come in, and we want them and we need them there. So we have planned accordingly, and we have a full protocol laid out for both observers, for our citizen boards, for tons of access by both those observers and the boards. So they can indeed participate, and we want them to.
That's great to hear. Thank you, Ray.
Sure. Next slide, Scott. On this one here, and again, part of our focus is increasing access. We know there's individuals that are, want to come vote in person, that's the way they're MO for participating. We, on the other hand, want to make sure that they're aware of these other options, and maybe in the COVID-19 environment, that they say, today or for this cycle, I will be safe. Not that, again, we're not making the polling place safe, but they, we want to make sure they're aware of this in person or for both early voting, 14 days of it, to remove some of the crowds on Election Day, or the vote by mail process. And one of those things is, we actually did send out mailers to all non-permanent early voting voters, 612,000 to be exact, to tell them that basically, we know they're not on the permanent early voting list, but should they choose, we want to make it easy for them to do that. And we created what we're really proud of and excited for, a online portal where a voter can go in and make their one-time request, so they don't want to be on peal forever, they don't want to be permanent, but this cycle, they may want to basically vote by mail and not take a chance, if you will. So those 612,000 were provided this card they could mail back, or they could go and make a one-time request, or actually sign up to peal permanently. That online portal was newly built so they could actually provide a digital signature. And in doing though, that launched probably about two weeks ago, just within that timeframe, at request.maricopa.vote, we've seen 7,083 submissions as of this morning, and that grows, it was 7,001 this morning at 9 o'clock. So I'm literally trying to watch it, it's growing by leaps and bounds to the extent that, once we start getting a little bit more advertisement towards it, individuals know they can, again, both make a one-time request or a permanent early voting signup. And we're seeing about 3,000 one-time requests that came through that portal. So again, people are exercising their option to say, I don't want to do this forever, but it may be COVID-19, this is what I'll do for this election. And that's why we went from 1.7 million to now 1,795,118 peal as of today. Again, round up to 1 million voters, or 1.8 million. That's pretty much covers the early voting part of it. I'll, excuse me, turn it back over to Scott to carry through the rest of the Election Day planning.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Ray. Thanks for that. Any questions for Ray before he turns back over to Scott?
Mr. Chairman?
Steve Gallardo.
Thank you. Ray, on the request for early ballots, what is the deadline? I understand, like, you know, come middle of July, if someone wanted, I'm assuming wanting to go vote early, they can find a location and go in person to vote, but if they wanted to still have a ballot mailed to them, to their home, what is that, what is, I guess, the drop dead date for someone to have a ballot mailed to?
Chairman Supervisor Gallardo, the drop dead is statutory, and it's 11 days prior. It's always the second Friday, so Friday, July 24th would be that 11 days prior at 5:00 PM. So a voter has to make, if they want a ballot mailed to them, would have to make that request then, or if they want, and that includes special election boards, that's a team of two individuals, different party, they go out to the different facilities, nursing facilities, or somebody who is unable to physically mark the ballot, but 11 days out.
Thank you. Ray, so, because we brought, this was brought up as well, so how are you doing the special election boards in the midst of COVID, and, you know, many of these residential facilities, these nursing homes or whatever you have, they're just not letting anyone go visit. I mean, you're just not allowed in there. So how do you tend to those folks?
Chairman Supervisor Gallardo, it actually is, again, COVID-19 has thrown a lot of us into having to look at better practices, not just best practice, but better. And we actually have, first and foremost, is we've been proactive. Some of the board, or by the board providing us with the staffing resources we need, our special election board team has grown to where we actually have, for a couple of months now, been reaching out to the 600-plus facilities, giving them kits, and by kits, I mean getting them registration forms, getting them information. But the key thing is, is you're absolutely right. Most of these nursing assistants, if not all of them, don't want anybody in there. But we've overcome that by four protocols. One is our traditional one, where let's say it's a home and an individual is incapacitated or needs physical assistance, then we can still go in person, practicing, social distancing, wiping down equipment, doing everything we can. The second part to address the nursing homes is actually kind of simple but innovative in that we have two things. One, we can do what we call a handoff, we bring the packet as if we mailed it to them, we hand it to a third-party nurse, for example, you're at a hospital, they don't want us in the room. The individual and that caregiver, as required, as allowed for by statute, can take that ballot to the person, if they're physically able to mark the ballot, have them vote it, we'll be waiting outside in the lobby or in the parking lot, literally. They will come back and we'll exchange it, we'll, using cleansing protocols, Ziploc bags and all that, to take that ballot and cast it. The second part, for those that don't have that or want to be participatory, we're going to use technology, Skype, FaceTime. It's kind of like, we actually have an individual now that we constantly go out to who is allergic to almost everything, so we vote her behind her glass window. We sit on the other side. Same thing now is, the difference is, the window is a cell phone. So we will, we will actually be providing an iPad, we'll go to the facility, that'll be connected, we'll allow that person to bring it to the voter, and as if we're there with the voter, the two citizen boards will help mark the ballot. So we can overcome that that way, or the traditional SCB process. Hopefully, that answers your question.
That does. Thank you, Ray.
Ray, before you get off, I'm staring at this card about, yes, mail me a ballot, and I can't make out everything on this, but is it clearly? me a ballot, and I can't make out everything on this, but is it clearly stated a date? I think about, maybe not so much on the digital side, but these cards are going out in the mail, correct?
That is correct, Chairman.
Is it clearly stated, those, those important dates? Because sometimes you stack up mail and say, I will get to it. People might have in their mind, oh, I got to remember to get at this about three or four days before the election, so I'll send it off so they'll mail me something. Is it clearly stated, if they want to participate in this way, that there's almost a drop dead date to this, the use of this card?
Chairman, members of the board, absolutely. This is just the forward-facing part of the card. It's actually eight and a half by 11. The top part of the card explains the whole, if you will, COVID, in light of COVID kind of thing. And it has 18-point font that return this no later than. And it gives you that, it gives you that, actually, most of the time, we asked for it by 15 days out so that we give it time to get to us in the mail. But it is clearly identified. And on top of that, above this is where what I had mentioned is big old fonts. You can use this card, but in lieu of that, to make it an instant request, go to request dot Maricopa dot vote or Bballeriedotvote. So there is a big prominent section above that mailer. And we almost, truth be told, prefer that they go online because it's instant. But we don't, didn't want to disenfranchise and say, well, you can mail it in, but they don't have to, and it is prominent on the card.
Okay. Very good. I just, and you guys have looked at every word on that card, right? Because we've had issues before, translation, or why did you put that on there? So you guys have looked with that type of eye also?
Chairman, members of the board, absolutely. One of the things is, and again, thank you for the resources you provided. I know you're all familiar with Erica because we robbed her from you. But we have, yes, we have three or four individuals that are, their key and focus is to look at the translation. But on top of that, those folks that designed this card, Megan Gilbertson, Communications Director, Jeska on the election side, they redesigned these to make them, if you, just this card alone, if I showed you the two years ago, you, you would have not been able to make it out. It's hard enough, there's a lot of stuff required by law for us to ask to a permanent early voter, but they redesigned it and Jeska and Erica did a great job of translating it and making sure it was clear and concise.
Okay. Thank you. If no further questions, we'll, Scott, please take over. Thanks again, Ray, for your presentation.
Chairman, members of the board, thank you for having me. Thank you, Ray. So, yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, so the next portion of the presentation will be discussing how we improve strategies and our strategies for improving access to in-person voting. And we're confident with the efforts that we're making to make it easier for voters to request early ballots, those in conjunction with our efforts to improve and make access for in-person voting, that we are going to have a very accessible election. And some of those strategies are to have more early voting centers. So in 2018, during the early voting period, we were just over 30 early voting centers. Now we're going to be opening them in phases. We'll be opening five at 27 days, nearly 60 at 14 days before the election, another 27 days before the election, for about almost a total of 100 on Election Day. And those early vote centers will be open in evenings and on weekends. So that is a significant improvement over prior election years. We're also going to a vote anywhere vote center model, moving from the precinct-based voting that we used in 2018. And this is going to provide voters, and this will be on Election Day, and this will provide voters in 2018, they had 41 voting options. That was their assigned precinct and 40 other Election Day vote centers. Now we'll be anywhere from 90 to 100 Election Day vote centers, and those voters will have the option to vote at any one of those locations. We've also made sure that we're putting our, those vote centers along light rail and bus routes. And we're also making sure that we are serving our Native American and rural communities as well as high-density in-person areas, so where voters have a history of voting in person. And one of the data-driven decisions and the tools that we use to make those decisions is this map here in front of you. And this shows 2016 primary, 2018 general, 2018, our 2016 general and also 2018 primary and general in-person voting patterns. And the darker, the red colors means the higher tendency that those voters are to vote in person. So we made sure that we had vote centers located in those areas, but not just those areas. Right now, the vast majority of all voters in Maricopa County are within two to three miles of a vote center, the way that we've been able to make sure that they're geographically dispersed across the entire county. Mentioned that we're also, this is how we identify where we, the different bus routes and the light rail routes are. As we go through, we can identify them on this map, make sure that we have a location that can serve those voters, that if they don't have transportation. So in addition to making decisions about where vote centers are located, we also have to make decisions on how many voters may participate in the election. So we do that through a turnout forecast. And I do want to caution you here that this turnout forecast is really based off of three different models that look at prior similar elections as well as voter registration increases. They aren't considering factors of, for COVID-19, so how COVID-19 may impact turnout, or the fact that our August election has gone from the last week in August to the first week in August, or that ASU won't be in session and most of the colleges around the country won't be in session. So those students are now at home voted, will vote with their parents or where they live with their parents. So all those types of factors, because they're new, for the first time this election, we can't really determine exactly how that those will impact the selection. So what we do focus on is creating enough models that we can get a confidence level that participation will fall within a certain range. So that's why we developed three different models. What those models are showing, that we're going to have anywhere from 29 to 32% turnout, which would be around 620,000 voters participate in this election, up to over 750,000, with a good portion of those being in-person voters. They would range anywhere from 98,000 in-person voters up to 116,000 in-person voters. And we use those forecasts not only to identify the resources we might need in the polling locations, the number of ballots that we would need there, the number of supplies, the number of poll workers, but also to assist us in helping determine how long voters may have to wait in line. And as an election department, our goal is to really have the vast majority of voters wait no more than 30 minutes in line. And so what we've done is, we've done a process flow of our vote centers, looking at these large vote centers with nine check-in stations, 20 voting booths. And we've done this process flow, we can determine how long it takes to check in on average for a voter, how long it takes to vote the ballot. And then that helps us determine how many of those check-in stations or voting booths we need. And one of the areas we did find was, we did have a bottleneck on our, the number of precinct-based tabulators we had in our vote centers. We're having to add a second one, which is also adding redundancy to the process in case one were to fail on Election Day, but also helps us quickly get voters through the entire process, eliminating those bottlenecks. And through that analysis, we can identify what potential wait times could be. And what, that's what you're seeing here on the slide now. So there's two different columns, looking at average wait time from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, the highest expected timeframe where we anticipate voters to turn out. And then whether we had 75 vote centers or 100 vote centers for this August primary election, considering that there might be 116,000 total voters voting in person on Election Day. And what we can determine is that if we had 75 vote centers with nine check-in stations across Maricopa County, voters would wait on average about 31.6 minutes to vote. But if we can increase that number to 100 vote centers, voters would wait, wait about 17.8 minutes to vote. But if we can be successful in those strategies, and some of those were what Mr. Ballance Weyler described earlier, is sending out those communications to voters, for us reaching those voters, and what the impact of maybe COVID-19 might have on whether a voter chooses to vote early in, in person or by mail, that may also help us reduce the number of voters that actually turn out on Election Day, and then we can further reduce our wait times. And that's what the column on the right is showing, that if we are successful in our strategies to be able to inform voters of their options to vote early, or to select a mail-in ballot either one time or permanently, we may be able to drive these wait times down to being under 13 minutes, or right around 13 minutes, if we can get up to 100 vote centers. So we're also implementing strategies to help improve how reliable our election can be. And we've, as we experienced in our March Presidential Preference Election, the challenges that we were experiencing with our locations, having locations available for the public, reliability is one of those considerations. We want to make sure that we're not having to go through those same experiences again, or what are our strategies to overcome them if we do encounter them. So here are some of the things that we're doing as election department to make sure that we have a reliable election. Some of those are stress testing our ballot on-demand printer. We have new ballot on-demand printers. Well, they're really printers that we've owned always, our affidavit printers that we've used to print control slips and the envelopes in our ballot, in our polling locations. But we've retrofitted them to turn them into ballot on-demand printers. So we're currently going through and running thousands of ballots through those printers, trying to identify when they would run out of toner, when the drums might fail on those, so we can be prepared with resources out in the field to be able to respond appropriately. We are also testing how those ballot on-demand printers, the ballot that's printed from those, interact with our precinct-based tabulators and our central count tabulators, making sure that there won't be any issues with those. We're also looking to make sure that we have sufficient paper to meet the band, the demand for early ballot requests. And I discussed this earlier, but this is where we've, through using this ballot on-demand technology, we've been able to be confident that we will have enough paper to be able to meet those requests. We're reducing the number of pre-printed ballots that we would have to have in any of our polling locations, saving hundreds of thousands of ballot on-demand stock to be able to serve those early ballot requests. Another way that we're improving reliability is we're leasing retail spaces, convention centers, malls throughout the valley. So we actually, through that lease arrangement, we're able to control the hours of those locations. We're able to ensure that those locations won't cancel on us. However, we did have a location that we were going to use in Metro Center, and unfortunately, it looks like Metro Center will no longer be available to us, but we're looking to find another location very close to Metro Center. As far as our recruiting and training of poll workers. So we're actually fully staffed with our recruitment currently, but we're hiring additional poll workers. We've made sure that we, we can operate a polling location, we'll have 10 poll workers in every location, and we're confident that we can run a polling locations with six to seven. So that allows us to overcome a 30 to 40% absentee rate in our polling locations. We're also hiring 30 additional inspector-level poll workers. So these are poll workers we'll put through inspector-level training. We're going to bring them on-site 27 days before the election. They're going to help us with setups through these polling locations, they're going to help us with supply kit building, all of those types of things, that if we needed to redeploy those poll workers at any time during the early voting period or on Election Day, we'd have those excess poll workers. We're also making sure that we have process in place to redeploy cleaning and sanitizing and safety supplies. So we are, we've created a checklist that every day during the early voting period, the inspectors will be doing inventories to make sure that they have sufficient cleaning supplies for the next day. They're completing that inventory list, they're providing it to a courier that we're sending around daily to retrieve the early ballots and also restock the cleaning and sanitizing and safety supplies. And they'll, so the inspector will fill out that form at the end of one day, our courier will pick that up and be able to provide them the necessary resources that they need for the following day. And then also, just the vote center anywhere model for this election is also another way that we're improving reliability. There could be other issues beyond COVID-19, why an election or polling location may go down. It could be a power outage in the local area or other reasons. And with the vote center model, it allows a voter, if they were, that location was their preferred choice, but they would only have to go a few miles further to get to another location, while we were diligently working to restore the power at that other location. We've also procured additional generators so we can have and make sure that we could restore power if a power outage were to occur. So some of the strategies that we're deploying to improve safety. So in, at in-person voting, we've made sure that all of our locations are large enough for us to be able to implement physical distancing. We're looking at over 2,000 square feet for most of our locations. We have some Phoenix Convention Center that's close to 17,000 square feet. So that will allow us to be able to implement physical distancing. One of the key factors that drove how we selected locations, we wanted to make sure that we had six feet between every check-in station, six feet between every voting booth, so we could keep voters six feet apart from each other and also have sufficient space for our poll workers.
Bill Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Scott, great presentation. Just wanted, because this came up earlier, just wanted to ask about the convention center. Do you know where in the convention center that the polling place is going to be? Do you know that yet? Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gates, yes. So we have a couple convention, or three convention centers that we're using, but the one in Phoenix is, it is in the South Hall, and we're working on the exact rooms currently with the city of Phoenix. And you said, did you say 17,000? Was that the one in the South Convention Center? Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gates, that is correct. 17,000 square feet of voting space inside the Phoenix Convention Center. Okay. And do you happen to know the size of the South Convention Center? Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gates, I don't know the entire square footage of the South Convention Center. I'd have to follow up with our facilities acquisition team to confirm that. Yeah, I think it's quite a bit bigger than 17,000 though, isn't it? Yes, from the floor plans that I've seen, we're only taking a small portion of the South Convention Center. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
So as, so as far as other, and Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gates, you did have a question about observers in the polling locations as well. And it does fall within our safety approach. And if a observer gets approval through the county chair for, of their party to be an observer in a polling location, we would absolutely welcome them in, and we'd be able to provide them with the necessary protective gear as well. So we'd be able to provide them with the masks that we're providing our vote, our, our poll workers and the gloves. Mr. Chair?
Bill Gates.
Thank you. Thanks, Scott, for following up on that question. I think it's extremely important that we, we push that message out as much as possible to the chairs of, of all the parties so that they know, I don't want there to be any misinformation out there that the county is not allowing this access. That's great to hear. It's extremely important part of democracy and required under the Arizona statutes that observers from the parties are able to be there. Obviously, this mask issue, I don't, I don't mean to bring up the 800, you know, the elephant in the room, but, but we as a board need to make sure we've completely talked through this issue and what this board's policy is going to be. I'm not asking, have that discussion right now, what this board's policy is going to be if someone refuses to put on a mask. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Bill. Go ahead, proceed, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, and we, speaking of the PP for our poll workers, we will be providing them with gloves, with masks, enough for them to even have several changes of a mask throughout the day. And then we've been able to procure enough cleaning supplies so that our poll workers can sanitize and clean those high-touch surfaces. That's going to be our site books, our, our voting booths, the pens that we're issuing to poll workers. That's going to be light switches, door handles, all of those types of things will be, undergo frequent cleaning of, of the, of the equipment. And then we're doing voter And then we're doing voter outreach. And as Mr. Valenzuela stated, that 90-day notice, the early ballot requests, all of those things to inform voters of their different options to participate in this election, and to inform them of the, how their in-person voting experience, if they choose that option to vote, will look different. We will have physical distancing in the polling location. We will have PPE that our poll workers will be, be wearing. We will be issuing voters gloves. All of those types of, types of items will go through our voter outreach. And then we're also able to implement screening and physical distancing here at our election department. We have a robust number of community members that come in and assist with early ballot processing, signature verification, even in our tabulation center. And so we're able to keep those individuals safe as well here at the elections department. We're implementing temperature checks upon entry into the building. We're grouping our election boards in similar types of groups, so we can keep that contact tracing option available. And then we are implementing physical distancing as much as possible within the department, and then having all of our permanent and temporary staff wear masks when they're in the department as well. So we did want to provide you an update on where we are with our, obtaining our locations, our cleaning supplies, and our recruitment efforts. And so far, we have been able to obtain locations with ample space to implement physical distancing. Our, our goal was to have 100 vote centers, and we're nearing in on that goal as we speak. We're up to, we were up to 93, and then we had to drop it back down to 92 due to the Metro Center mall closing. But right now, we have five locations secured for 27 days. We have 54 locations secured for the 14 days before the election. Our goal was 55. We have 18 locations secured for seven days before the election. Our goal is 25, and then 14 for, secured for, for election day, and our goal was 15 at this point in time. So we're nearing in on those goals, and we have about 10 different locations that we're currently in contacts with, maybe be able to up that and get us to our, her, our full 100 vote centers on election day. And then we have been able to, I mentioned one of the strategies that we're doing to ensure access, to make sure that we have locations close to public transportation. And currently, we have over 60 that are along bus routes and light rail stops. So we're, feel confident that we've been able to meet the needs of those voters that may not have transportation, may not be able to drive that two and a half to three mile drive to their voting location. We've also been able to recruit 1,200 poll workers. So our goal was one, just over 1,000 poll workers when you consider our troubleshooters, you consider the contingency inspector level folks that we're going to bring into this department. So we've, are, are at 100% staffed at this point in time. So we're thrilled that we've been able to do that, and be this far out and be, be staffed fully. And then we're looking to really, want to thank all of our community partners that have really come to the table to help support this election, and give us, and help us get the polling locations that we needed. We worked with the county's real estate department to help us get some of those retail facilities. The malls came. We have voting locations in nearly every mall across the county. So those malls are going to be very valuable partners through this process. We have some of our traditional locations that did have rooms and facilities large enough for us to be able to implement our physical distancing procedures. So we want to thank those schools, some of the school, our schools and churches that have really come through to help us through this process. And the last thing I wanted to cover before I open it up to questions from you, Mr. Chairman, and the board, is our strategies to improve tabulation. With all this discuss, discussion about COVID-19, it could be easily forgotten that we do have brand-new tabulation equipment. And along with that tabulation equipment comes a brand-new ballot style. So if, we first introduced it in the Madison School District election in November, small jurisdictional election, and then Democratic voters used it for the March Democratic Presidential Preference, but this will be the first time that independents, Republicans, Libertarians, and other voters were, will be using and voting on a, with an oval rather than an arrow. And it's been over two decades since we, we last changed our ballot style. So this is a huge improvement for voters. It's a lot more intuitive for them to fill out. And then last June, and that comes with the brand-new tabulation equipment, that $6.1 million investment that the board made into the elections department last June. And in March, we had significant success in being able to speed up how quickly we're able to tabulate votes and tabulate ballots. And that actually comes at a really great time, when we're anticipating a significant uptick in the amount of early ballots that will be requested, and will be required to go through our central count tabulators. So we're very pleased to have this new equipment, and to help on the back end of the election process when we're tabulating and reporting results. So with that, I want to open it up to any questions that any members of the board may have, or you may have, Mr. Chairman.
I'll open it up for questions. Being that I can't see you guys raising your hands, I'll call one by one. I'll start with my Vice Chairman, Jack Sellers. Do you have any questions or comments?
No, no questions and no further comments from what I made earlier.
Thank you, Jack. I will go to Supervisor Chukri.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a few of each, actually. Scott, first and foremost, I don't think there are words to describe the work you've done. I'm very impressed by the work you've done, along with the colleague, your colleagues in the elections department. Notwithstanding that, I, I think one of your greatest attributes, and I believe we'll see it unfold here in this, in this primary election, is that you have a backup plan to the backup plan to that of the backup plan. And, and that's so important, because I think that's where, where we didn't, to quote Mr. Fontes earlier, where we haven't hit best in class. We saw that in 2018. You were, were doing the best you could when we, we talked about the pivoting of all pivoting with what happened with the presidential preference back in March, in such a short timeframe, you were able to do that. I want to thank you for the outreach you've given to, to me personally, in my DTU office, as well as to my many constituents. We've had several calls, we've had a town hall, we've had, you name it. You've been very gracious, so I'm grateful to you for that. Moving into, to more questions, Scott, yes, the Metro Center is a surprise. I think that was loud and clear this past weekend about the, the closing. And as we move to getting those sites, I know that you've reached out to my team about some of the potential needs of my district, and we're happy to help you. Are we going to have a backup plan? Are we going to try and get to 105, even though we may not use those five, in case we have another Metro Center incident? Or what happened in 2018, which is really no one's fault? I want to say, Mr. Gates called me early that morning about, was it a golf store or something that was seized the night before, Bill? Is that right?
It was actually not a golf store, it was golf, it was like a golf academy. Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Over there next to the PGA Tour Superstore, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So are we, are we ready for that, Scott? And then the same would apply to, congratulations on getting to that milestone of volunteers. Are we going to have some, some folks on call, if you will, that in case someone gets sick, or someone at the last minute has a COVID concern, or a family emergency, you know, you name it? Are we going to have a backup list or a site list? And then I'll, I'll stop there before my other questions.
So, so Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Chukri, so to cover the first one about the locations themselves. So right now, we do have some locations that we are securing for November as well. So right now, even though we're at 92 locations identified for August, we have identified a few extras that would satisfy the need for the November election, but they're close to another location. So that could potentially serve as a backup if we did lose a site on election day. But one of the advantages of the vote center model is that we're not assigning voters to any one particular precinct. So, and what we've seen in some other jurisdictions around the country, when a voting location goes down, then they reassign voters to one precinct, and that means thousands of voters then are forced to go to one precinct. Where the vote center model really allows a voter to go to any location during this time of uncertainty, and that we do have a risk that some locations may not be available to us. So those are some of the strategies that we're, that we're deploying with the locations themselves. And then as far as the poll workers, right now, we have over the number that we need for this election. We are hiring those additional 30 that will come here, and what we'll call is super poll workers, that will be very trained, not only on all the typical duties that a poll worker would provide in a vote center or voting location, but also on additional setup procedures, additional, help us with some of the stress testing of the ballot on demand printers, helping us with building those supply kits. So just like as you said, if we had poll workers that did call in sick, or we needed to replace, we had those numbers available to us.
Right. And then my, my last question, and then there'll be more of a comment. Scott, I, I know that we, we had some concerns about access to paper. You've, you've addressed that, meaning going back to the, the number of precincts we had, last go-around. And then secondly, we had a shortage for the, for the presidential preference as it related to cleaning supplies, things of that nature. Do we have all of the supplies? Just want to reassure myself and my constituents, we have all the cleaning supplies necessary at this juncture for the August 4th primary?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Chukri, that's correct. We have been able to obtain all the necessary protective gear, as well as cleaning supplies, to be able to clean all those high-touch surfaces in our polling locations, and provide those poll workers with the necessary supplies to keep them safe while working in our locations. So, and we've actually have a contingency built in there as well, just in case for some reason that in-person voting did exceed our estimations and our forecasts. So we do have enough for the August primary at this point in time.
Great. Then lastly, Mr. Chairman, thank you for your work on this, all of my colleagues. I mean, this has been a heavy lift, not just this year, but last, and going, going even prior to that. Look, I think our druthers would be to have as many polling sites as, as possible, to have as many sites as we did in the 18 election, right? And it's, it's just unfortunate this new world we're in. And, and it's not just Arizona, it's across the board. So it's across the country. So to, to my constituents who are concerned about the access to polling sites, I still hold true that I'm willing to spend what it takes to spend, I'm willing to do what it takes to do to, to make voting to, to one's own needs, meaning that if they want to go to a polling location, they can, or if they want to nail in their ballot, they can. Unfortunately, this election, we are compromised, and I choose that word specifically because we are, given the COVID-19 outbreak. This isn't some kind of myth, this isn't some kind of excuse, it simply is the reality we are in. And with that, I think Scott has done, and the team has done a wonderful job in trying to say, how do we do what we can, the best we can? And now, Scott, as you know, it's going to be abundantly important to get the word out about people being able to vote early, about people being able to do what it is we're setting forth, so we don't have a bottleneck come election day. And I know you've got that, that box checked, but I would just make sure that we do that to the best of our ability to get the word out of just how easy it will be to vote in a secure and safe way come August 4th. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Scott.
Great. Thank you, Steve, very much. And if we need to circle back, we will here with a discussion also to any of my supervisors that might have something else pop up in their head based on, on how these questions are being answered. I will stay in the routine then, I've gone one and two, so District 3, Bill Gates, do you have any questions or statements you'd like to make?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, appreciate it. Thanks, Scott. Great, great presentation. I mean, really, really unbelievable work that you and your team have done. And by the way, I just wanted to comment, thank you for reminding us of the fact that we have a new ballot style. It can be very easy to forget that with everything that's been going on. We were talking about, you know, all the work that was going to have to go into that effort, so we need to continue to have our eye on that ball as well, and, and clearly you guys do. So just, just a couple things I wanted to touch on real quick. The, so the, the line, again, you, you went through one of the slides where you talked about how long you thought people might have to wait to vote during certain periods of time. Yeah, thank you. And, and so my question on that, when I look at those numbers, first of all, where are people going to line up? Are people going to line up inside or outside, given our social distancing concerns?
So, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gates, yeah, the majority of people will line up outside the polling locations, and they will, will have those markers, similar to what you see in grocery stores. So in the location as well, we'll have those when we have some queuing areas where folks are waiting for their ballot to be printed, where they're waiting to put their ballot in the precinct-based tabulator. We'll have those physical distancing identifiers on the ground, but then for voters that are waiting in line to get into the polling location, they will be outside for the majority of them. But that is one of the advantages also of us having the mall locations. So if we, if we end up getting, now it's looking like there'll be nine mall locations, well then those folks will be able to wait inside the mall as well. So, and then there, with the city of Phoenix location, it being 17,000 square feet, we could offer some line standing inside the location, not having to be outside the polling location. But those would also then be physical distance, six feet apart.
Okay, so let's talk, this, this is great, I'm happy you mentioned that about the malls. I'm sure you guys are focused on this, but we need to be very focused on the electioneering issue, okay? Because we do not, you know, you know, we, we need to have all that set up. People are going to want to electioneer if people are lined up in the mall, we need to think through all that. We want to have, one, people having the opportunity to electioneer if they choose to at appropriate places, but we also don't want people who are in line to be subjected to improper electioneering. So I'm sure you guys will think through that, but just, because if you don't think through it, trust me, those elections observers will help you guys to think through those issues. So it's great, I love it in that they're going to be shaded, but that's going to be a new sort of complication level on electioneering. But for those situations where we're not in a mall, and we're outside, are we going to have shade for each and every one of those people who's standing outside on August 4th?
So, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gates, we, we won't have shade for every single one of our locations that, where there could be a line. We just don't have the, the capacity or ability to get those pop-up tents to, for the entire line area.
Why not?
And, Mr. Chair, just the, where these locations are located throughout the valley, making sure that we put those pop-up tents up, the logistical challenges of it being potentially monsoons, monsoon season, and getting them up and then blowing over the night before, all of those types of challenges with those pop-up tents.
Okay, well, I, I understand. I mean, this is, talk about 3D chess here. I mean, there's so much going on, this is complicated. Having said that, and we don't know what the weather's going to be that day, as I've raised before. If we have a monsoon, we've got one issue, and it sounds like you've done a good job with generators. But if we don't, if we've had a big monsoon storm the night before, then it's probably going to be nice and clear and sunny that morning, and it's going to get hot out there. And so I want us to push, I do not want someone to get heat stroke, standing in line to vote because they have to stand outside because of COVID-19. And I know you didn't start the fire, Scott, but unfortunately, you're going to have to deal with this. We need to think through how to get shade for people. And if we need to hire additional people, I mean, I think this is a real issue. I, I hope I'm not being Chicken Little here, but I don't want people to go home. I mean, this is the inverse of Wisconsin, you know, where it was cold, you saw those people cold, all bundled up. We need to do what we need to do as a board, we need to get you the resources to do what needs to be done. I don't want a single person to, to walk home and not vote. I don't want a single person to walk home and not vote because it's hot, and I don't want to stand in the, you know, I don't want to stand in the sun on August 4th. So, I know this is an impossible situation, but I want us to push ourselves. You know, there's a lot of kids out there who don't have jobs, teenagers who don't have jobs this summer because it fell through. Maybe they want a day where they get to stand up, you know, there's a lot of volleyball fam, people who have kids in volleyball, club volleyball. I know all those club volleyball families have those tents, and maybe they'll loan them to us for the day. I don't mean to make light of this, but this is an important issue, and I know it's very difficult, but let's push ourselves to see if we can't be ready for this.
Hey, Bill, this is Clint, just a quick thought, because it has been brought up, I think I asked Scott about it too. With the amount of people that are doing COVID testing and going to, and my thoughts with our little egg store, a lot of people were willing to wait in their cars, and that's got air conditioning cover. Do you think maybe we should ask Task Scott that the first line of defense is, how will we, maybe if that occurs, and that even covers rain and everything else, if we, and going with these larger places usually mean there's larger places to park, maybe we can come up with a possibility of figuring out with the line manager on how they could have a line work as people wait in their cars? That way, we're just having an umbrella for the line maintenance guys to walk out there and, you know, maybe fall, go into, chunking out of a parking lot and saying, hey, go in that side of the parking lot, and that'll be, you know, a 30-minute wait, and then get through those cars, follow them out, and go to another side of the parking lot. Something in that regard where the onus on waiting in line and keeping out of the elements is also upon the voter a little bit, because I don't know how we're going to do, I don't know how we're going to manage a pop-up tent line. I'm one of those volleyball players that, that bring, or my son is anyway, that we, it's upon ourselves to understand how to prepare to be waiting in line for the next game. I'm not looking for the volleyball league to provide that for me. So, maybe we can think about that.
So, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gates, and we can brainstorm some of these strategies, but I will, do want to remind you that our number-one strategy is moving them quickly through the voting process. And this wait-time analysis that we conducted was based off of nine check-in stations, 20 voting booths. And the facilities acquisition team that we have, our partnership with the Real Estate Department, we were able to identify many locations that were larger than nine, or that were larger enough that we can implement more than nine check-in stations in those voting locations. So, that should help, just from that standpoint, getting people through the process faster, and hopefully even reducing those wait times even more.
Well, yeah, let's talk about, let's, I don't want to go down a rabbit hole, but Bill, you brought up a great point. I think there's an ability to kind of talk about the specific use of the parking lot, and that might take that out. If you think about it, lots of us are waiting in parking lots, waiting for a place in line for the drive-up window, but we're not specifying to Whataburger how that is supposed to work. We just wait and see the line go down, and then you pop in there, and so, I think we need to take this one offline, but it goes to show how many things that we are trying to think of to prepare to run a fabulous election.
Mr. Chairman?
Steve?
Yeah, thank you for that visual of you playing volleyball. I don't think I've gotten that out of my mind yet. But one thing that Mr. Gates said is true, in that we have to make sure voter suppression isn't an issue. And when you're talking about 17,000 square feet, how hard is it to access that as well? So, we have our trust in Scott, but his concern is valid and real, and I know you agree, Mr. Chairman, I'm not suggesting otherwise. But let's continue to think this through and partner with you, Scott, because we cannot get sideways with DOJ, we cannot have anything about voter suppression, and we're always very good about protecting against unintended consequences, but I think the voter suppression issue goes hand in hand with Mr. Gates's concern as well.
I agree, Steve, yeah. And luckily, we have a chance to keep talking. Also, this is why we are doing what we're doing when it comes to finding new places, what we are, you know, the whole strategy, voting early, opening up places early, asking people to consider on this election, voting by mail. So, all of that is to try to knock this line down, so.
Mr. Chairman, that's absolutely correct, and that's what all these strategies are designed to do, and provide, make this election as accessible for voters in a variety of different ways. So, thank you for pointing that out.
You bet. Bill, continue on.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. Scott, do you have an estimate, if we were to do precinct-based voting on August 4th, do you have an estimate of how many people it would require to run that operation?
So, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gates, yes, so, for a precinct-based model of 500-plus locations, just from the poll worker standpoint, it would have required over 3,500 different poll workers to work that election, not counting all the additional central board workers here at McTech. And then, it would have, that would have increased the number of drivers we needed for delivering supplies, all of those types of things to support that 500-based precinct model.
So, 3,500 plus, and you've told us today, you can run this with about 1,000 people?
About 1,500 total, counting our central boards, but yes, 1,000 poll workers.
Okay. And from the access perspective, the typical schools that we have, churches, things like that, what's the maximum number of polling locations you think we could have obtained to run this on a precinct basis, precinct by precinct?
So, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gates, we did do an initial analysis of all our traditional locations that, based on our records, had a room that was large enough for us to implement physical distancing, and it was just over 200 locations. But not all of those were responsive or willing to provide that location for this election.
No, thanks for that, Scott, and that's a great point, even if they, I mean, some of these just simply would not be available because, well, the school, the date, I know, I've talked to the superintendent of Paradise Valley School District, and because the date has moved up, that's actually the day before the beginning of school, so they've got the larger rooms reserved for, you know, assemblies and things like that, if they're able to hold school in person. But that's another great point, even to the extent that some of these rooms may still be available, they're not large enough to do the social distancing. So, Mr. Chair, based upon this information, again, just like our previous discussion, I hoped to see a very different environment for this August election. I hoped that we could have precinct-based voting, that's what I wanted to see. I just see, based upon the hard work that our professionals have done, that it is literally impracticable and impossible to do that. So, given that fact, this plan that's been presented to us makes the most sense to protect people, to protect against the spread of COVID-19, and to give people the opportunity to vote either on Election Day, or maybe not on Election Day, but still in person. I think Maricopa County has historically done an excellent job of this hybrid voting, which is truly unusual, having robust mail-in elections, and also having robust Election Day voting, and, you know, early in-person voting. This plan checks all of those boxes. And so, I'm, again, it's not what I wanted to see, but it is what we can do, and so, I'm just really grateful to Scott and his team, and everyone in the Recorder's Office for all their work to get to this point. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, now I'll go to District 5, Supervisor Gallardo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess, just a couple of questions. One, what are we doing, and then maybe this isn't part of the plan, but something that maybe we should talk about, or with Scott and our election folks, in the PPE election this, what, in March, you know, four or five days prior to the election, we had a small team there, I believe on the 10th floor somewhere, I think Zach helped along with Bill, and they were monitoring social media, just to make sure that any information that was thrown out there on social media was accurate and correct, kind of just monitoring, making sure that that correct information is being put out there, either by, you know, a candidate or political party, or just an average voter, because I think it's critical. I mean, this election is much different than any other primary. We've never gone down this route, we've never have reduced it to the number that we're at. So, it's really important, and I know the team has done a great job, Scott and all his media folks have done a great job in getting the word out, letting people know, encouraging them to sign up on Pebble, all that guy, and we see it in the numbers. So, I think they've done a great job. So, I guess, what are we doing in terms, are we going to monitor social media as we did in the past, and making sure that the correct information is being put out there? Because all it takes is, you know, one person to put some false statement, let it be an elected official, or member of Congress, or someone put false information, it gets retweeted, and before you know it, you have some folks working with that info. So, what are we doing in terms of that?
So, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gallardo, we established a command center on Election Day, and we're actually opening it up early because we're going to have an early voting period. And we have our comms folks, and we actually reach out to communications officials throughout the county to assist us with doing just what you described, monitoring social media. There's tools out there that we can use to gather that information for us as well, and then we can go out and respond to those if they're on our sites. We can even remove some of those posts that maybe have profanity, different types of things, or that are electioneering, but then also make sure that we're responding and monitoring what information is being pushed out there through social media.
Very good, because I think it's really critical, particularly right now, you're going to have a lot of voters that are going to show up on Election Day, and they're going to go to their church or their schools expecting to vote, and come to find out it's been moved. And so, making sure we have the right information, making sure we're trying, we're doing everything we can to inform voters that, you know, they're going to have to go to one of these vote centers. All that is, I mean, it's difficult, don't get me wrong, I hear you. We're trying to do as much as we can as supervisors to inform our constituency, but it's something that we got to continue to do from now to Election Day, and also just combat any type of false information. My follow-up question, I guess, Scott, and I would kick myself if I don't ask this, but I need to. And I'm looking at the screen that you have now, the turnout screen that was used with Bill's questions, the 75 and 100. How did we determine that that would be sufficient to make sure that, you know, we don't have more than 30-minute wait line? Usually, when you have a full-fledged election, you're using every vote, or every polling place site, you usually can identify those areas that are going to have high turnout, and usually are the ones that have some type of a long line. But in this particular case, you're using vote centers, it's hard to really determine that, you know, the convention centers, you know, Phoenix Convention Center is going to have a high turnout versus, you know, Desert Sky Mall, or whatever. So, how do we determine that even the 75 or 100 is appropriate enough where they're not going to be waiting more than 30 minutes, if they need to wait 30 minutes? I hope they don't.
So, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gallardo, that determination was really through those forecast models that we performed, those three models, looking at prior elections, determining the total number of potential in-person voters, and then looking at that process flow through our vote centers, and determining how long it takes to check in a voter. And right now, it's just about two minutes per check-in station, and then how long it takes to actually vote the ballot. And voting the ballot right now, even the longest ballot, right now, our ballots will range anywhere from 12 to 18 questions, depending on the exact split or the area where the voter lives. So, and then that would determine that, even at the longest ballot, it'd take maybe about 3.2 to 5.2 minutes to vote that ballot. So, then, using that analysis, we can determine how long it would take a voter to move through a polling location. And so, that's how, those are the facts and figures, the analysis, the process flow that we look at, determine how long and how much, how many voting locations we needed to accommodate for this election and provide. And one of the big factors is, is that we're having at least nine check-in stations in nearly all of our voting locations, or nine or more, in nearly all of our voting locations. And many of those, and I'll, going to go back to the slide with this heat map, many of the locations that are in those red and orange areas, those are areas where we found that we could put 12 or 15 check-in stations in those vote centers. So, that would even help us be able to put that throughput through a vote center much more effectively. And when we've expanded the number of check-in stations, we've also expanded the number of voting booths in each location as well. So, if we have 12 voting, or 12 check-in stations, we've upped it up to 25 to 30 voting booths. When we get up to 15 check-in stations, we're exceeding 30 to 35 voting booths per location.
Okay. And I just, I think some, I think maybe Shukri had made this comment too, and I think it's really critical, I'm just going to repeat it, and I think it's real important for us to really have that backup plan, to move into action right away. Should we see a site out in the East Valley somewhere, or I think that's a long, is that long I-17, or the 101, that little red spot there, that, you know, if you have a site that is going to be, it looks like there's going to be some heavy turnout and long lines, and we're able to get additional staff, equipment, anything we need to do to alleviate any type of a long wait, you know? We know how hot it is, and when you're talking about August 4th, when you're talking about social distancing, I think that's some stuff we need to take into consideration. I hope we continue a dialogue, I think Bill brings up a good point, we need to have some type of covering for voters that are in line. I can almost venture out, we're going to have some lines at every one of these sites, so how do we make sure we do have a cover? I think social distancing and following CDC guidelines is critical, critical right now. So, keeping that in mind, how do we make sure that folks are not standing in the sun, even if it's for 13 minutes? You know, I have a hard time standing in the sun for just five minutes, let alone 13 minutes. So, how do we make sure that they're not standing in line in the middle of the sun, that we get that line movement? So, I would just re-echo or echo what Mr. Shukri and Mr. Gates have indicated. I also just want to make one comment, Mr. Chairman, and I'd kick myself if I didn't say this, not to get too political, but this election should have been an all-male ballot election. I'm sorry, it should have. Our state leaders had an opportunity to approve something, or give us the ability to make that decision, they chose not to. So, unfortunately, we're not able to do an all-mail. I would love to have done, I guess they call it the hybrid system, where we have, everyone gets mailed a ballot, and then we have a few voting sites. That would have definitely been my preference, but that's unfortunate. I think it's something, as we move on, that we continue to push the legislature to allow that option. This is a perfect example, even if it's just for this year, it should have been an all-male ballot election. The state leaders had an opportunity to correct it, and they failed, and that's unfortunate. With that, Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank Ray, I want to thank Scott, the Recorders and Elections Team for everything they've done. This is not easy. Scott, the recorders and elections team for everything they've done. This is not easy. If we all had an option or had a crystal ball, things would probably look a little different. But considering what we're dealing with in terms of the COVID-19, it has changed everything we do, including an election. It's unprecedented that what we're having to deal with, and we're having to rethink how we do elections. Yes, we got to think outside the box and try to look at every possible scenario. And that's what we're doing. I think this is a, a plan that could, that'll be successful come August 4th. I think everyone is going to have an opportunity to exercise their vote. And I think we have the right people in place to do it. But at the end of the day, to ensure that everyone, you know, was, was absolutely free in being able to exercise the right to vote, I think this really should have been an all-male ballot election. I've said this once, I'll say it again. If you disenfranchise one voter, that's one voter too many. And that is the measuring stick that we should provide on every type of decision we make. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank again our Scott, his team, Ray Valenzuela, the county recorder, everything that they've done to get us to this point. And I know there's some more decisions that need to be made, but at this point, I think we're ready to move forward.
Mr. Chairman.
Steve.
I feel bad for you and Fran. You look so lonely up there, just so you know. And I always love Mr. Gallardo's enthusiasm. Even, it comes across so clearly even in a Zoom meeting or webinar, whatever we're in. Mr. Chairman, one, one thing I mistakenly, I forgot to mention or ask Scott about, and I, I know he's on it, I probably missed it in part of his remarks, but Scott, you might recall, and my colleagues would, just a few years ago, we had no control over day of elections. We wanted to, and Scott, I think you even mentioned it, or, or someone had, that to have these troubleshooters hovering, right? We were going to have three, one troubleshooter or two for every three polling places or what have you. Do we have the troubleshooter component as part of this plan? I know we've gone down considerably in polling sites, but I, I think we do, correct? We, we've got people ready, engaged to rock and roll, for lack of a better term, when we need them. I just want to make sure that's there and I'm sorry, I'm sure you've mentioned it, I missed it.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Chukri, that's correct. We do have troubleshooters. We use those in, in every election. Those troubleshooters, and the name we call it and use for the troubleshooters is a little bit of a misnomer, but they're there to help out with Election Day activities if there is a concerned voter, to help the inspector as a backup, to help with some minor technical issues. But in addition to the troubleshooters, we have T-techs that we hire. Those T-techs are much more technical in nature and they also support on the election side from a technical. So if there's a more complicated issue with one of our ballot on demand printers or our, our check-in stations, they can respond appropriately. And we will have supply depots located throughout our, in the, in one, one in Central Valley, one in the Far East Valley, one in the Northwest Valley, and then some backup supply depots as well that are there and they're staffed with, with some of these troubleshooters, some of the T-techs. Those will be regionally deployed on, on Election Day. So we will have a, a forward-facing footprint of troubleshooters as well as T-techs to be able to respond to issues in the field.
Thank you.
Okay, so that, I think I've, I've, the board has gotten a chance to, to ask their questions. And I wanted to, I, I don't want to belabor the points. It's, it's been a long day already and we, we still have an executive session to go. So I'll try to keep, I'll try to keep this really brief because we got a next, a next item as well. First of all, I want to make sure everyone is clear that according to my chairman's address, I talked about these things and pulling off three great elections, learning from each one and stair stepping as we go. And I'll try to reflect back here in my question. So number, number two, this is absolutely a plan for this primary election. And things are always swirling and, but we have to submit a plan and we have to tell our people how we are going to run this election, what we are going to do, what our expectations are. So that is not including right now. We are not planning for the general election right now. Want to be clear, this is for the primary election and we are learning and we are expect to learn a lot of different things, but this is not for the general. I am going to correspond with both Supervisor Chukri and Supervisor Gates, and I'm not sure if I heard this topic mentioned with Supervisor Sellers, that we preferred a precinct-based election. The last seven years I've been here, I think I've said over and over again, I prefer precinct-based elections. It's closer to the people. It's closer to where they live. But COVID has changed this, at least for this election plan. We tried to pull off, I believe, a precinct-based election on the PPE. Other things changed at that point. The Republicans decided not to have the election. Then we were in the middle of the COVID issue. First question I had that I thought worked very well with the PPE, Mr. Jarrett, are you planning on using county elected, or I'm sorry, county workers to help with this election too? Because you talked about super workers that are going to be trained. Are any of those currently working for the county in different capacities with McDot, McFlood, that, that I thought really rescued us for the Democratic PPE election?
So, Mr. Chairman, yeah, the county employees were a great asset in the presidential preference election with helping with our setup teams, helping when we had to redeploy ballots, to turn, redesign our presidential preference election into a vote center model and to be able to provide basically a vote center functionality with paper ballots. And then also to serve on our red line, blue lines, receiving guidance back in the field on election night. And there definitely is a place for county employees to assist again in the August primary election. We're recruiting several of those for our red line, blue lines that receiving, as well as on Election Day, manning some of those pop-up tents for the drop boxes that we will have at our different vote centers.
Okay. Second, I'm going to ask Fran, Fran is, and Deb, is there anyone on the line? I hope, I hope there's a lot of people monitoring this, this meeting because it does go to the fact of, have I asked about citizen participation when it comes to the planning? We get to, we get to hear that quite often when we're on, in our own districts. What are you guys looking at? Why are you doing this? And I think we've been extremely transparent as the environment has offered the ability for what we are looking at and what we are planning. And again, it changes by the day and by the week. But I am going to learn, use this of past election as a learning experience. I would ask, I believe that Recorder Fontes was on the, was on the phone. Adrian, are you out there?
I am, Mr. Chairman.
Do you feel that, Adrian, do you feel, you are an elected official as well as I am in this board. Do you feel that, that your staff has been working alongside well with the election staff in order for this planning to pull off the best primary election that we possibly can up to this point?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm very proud to say that the answer is an absolute yes. We have really created a model here where some of the best and, and brightest that have come in, both into the early, early voting environment under Mr. Valenzuela and then under the Election Department environment under Mr. Jarrett are really doing phenomenal work. Our communication people over at the Recorder's Office work hand in glove with one of the superstars under Mr. Jarrett. And I will say her name, Lynn Gilbertson, has done amazing work and she should be commended over on, you know, that side of the house. The back and forth, I, I think any citizen who took the time to look at and listen to how well-integrated these plans are and how closely Mr. Jarrett and Mr. Valenzuela are working together on behalf of the board and on behalf of my office ought to be impressed. I, I know the, our good friends in, in, in the media sometimes are much happier providing coverage when there are conflicts or tension. But the reality is, we're doing a great job and this model that we created, both in my office and working directly with the board, is a really, really good model. And we're doing really good bipartisan work for the voters. So I'm very proud of the way they've all worked together. And I think every member of the board and every citizen in Maricopa County ought to be as proud.
So I'll just ask you a direct question then. Did you feel that that was transpiring on the run-up to the, the Democratic PPE as well? Did you, did you, have we stepped it up a notch? Or have we, in, in your words, what do you, what do you think on the run-up to that was?
There's no way we could have done that election as well as we had without complete integration of all of the folks who are involved in this. Our IT staff was working at one period for about 72 hours straight in through the evening. And they were working directly with folks at OET and in other parts of the department to completely transform this election in the five days as Mr. Jarrett mentioned. This has been a completely integrated effort and I'm, again, very, very proud of the work that everybody has done. And I'm, I'm excited to see what's going to happen. I think we will have a great election and I think when administrators from around the country look at the model we have created for this, even in this environment, in this COVID-19 environment, we're best in class. And I absolutely believe that folks will be looking at what we're doing and implementing this model around the United States in two years.
And Supervisor Gallardo just, just brought up his preference on, you know, and I know it's being talked about in different areas of the country and things. The legislature did not offer us the ability, nor has the governor offered up an ability to go all-male ballot. I want to make sure that you understand that there is a part of this plan that enhances the communication to the voter if that's how they want to participate in an election. But we are spending an awful lot of time making sure that day of election voting will be run in a safe, fair, and, well, basically, absolutely a safe way. We're talking about disinfection supplies. We're talking about training of our people. We're even talking about how to, how to make people comfortable waiting in a possible line. Are we, will we be working together all the way up to this point, even if something changes in the environment, that you would absolutely work with us to pull off a great day of election in August?
Mr. Chairman and, and members of the board, I'll say unequivocally that none of us can do this without the others. We're completely integrated when it comes to running these elections. Early voting is a seamless move into emergency and then Election Day. The 14-day model prior to Election Day actually is a, really an augmentation, sort of an expansion of what Election Day is. So we're going to have an election season now in Maricopa County that runs for two weeks. The question of the portion of voters, the number of voters, the estimates that Mr. Jarrett has put on there, the wait times look like, things of this nature, I genuinely believe that as we work together, not whether we or when we, but as we work together, as in continuing what we've been doing for the last almost a year now, we're going to move a lot of our voters from Election Day into those early voting spaces. Obviously, Election Day will stay open for voters that want to do that. In-person voting has been greatly expanded and the access to the permanent early vote list or just ballot by mail for this one election season only. We're communicating with voters in ways that we've never done before. We're communicating with the board in ways that we've never done before. And I'm, again, really proud of the work we've done. This is good government at its best across party lines and across the second-largest voting jurisdiction in the United States of America. It's a privilege and an honor to do this work and to do it hand in glove with this board. I'm, I'm very grateful for the resources that you all have given us to expand this operation and not just the technology or the money, but the people you've sent us have done an amazing job.
Okay. Okay. Well, that's, I'm sorry?
Mr. Chairman?
Steve Gallardo.
Yes, thank you. I just want, I just want to clarify something. I just throw this for the record because I, I think it's, it's important as well. Myself, I think I would have joined the four of you in wanting a, a full precinct-by-precinct election where we utilize every precinct that we have established. I would have preferred that as well. That would have been my first option. But because of the COVID-19, because of the situation that we're at, the, 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 the ability to find sites, the ability to find workers, all that stuff, because of that, I believe the legislature should have acted and given us the ability to do all-mail. Nonetheless, they did not do that. They gave us, you know, the situation that we're in right now. We came up with a plan, which I think is, is a, is a workable plan. I think it will serve the purpose for the primary election. I have been working very closely on my side of the aisle. I've had long conversations with Congressman Diego, Congressman Stanton, the Democratic Party, and every one of the legislators that are in my district, particularly because it's minority-majority districts, you know, the Voting Rights Act. I wanted to make sure that they understood what we're, what we were dealing with and, and the direction we were going. So I had a number of conversations with not only the lawmakers on my side of the aisle in my supervisor districts, which are all Democrats, but on my side of the aisle, but along with the party and members of Congress, we continue to have these dialogues. They're familiar with, with the map that we have in front of us. They're familiar, the situation that we're in. So I believe in the, in the, in the, the feedback and community response just as much and been doing what we can to make sure that they're, they understand the map that we have in front of us and the direction that the county is going. So I just want to throw that out for the record.
No, I, I appreciate the clarifying statement. So I appreciate that, Steve. You've, you've worked for many years. You've worked in that, in that department. You understand it well. So, and I, I've really have enjoyed working with you to come up with these plans over the last several years and the rest of my board as well. So with that then, if no further comments, I will call for the vote or call for the motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Sellers.
I move that we adopt this plan as presented.
Great. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Thank you guys all very much. This represents, again, thousands of hours of hard work out of, out of elections, out of our own staff, just everybody included, to try to pull off a second, very good election. And we'll strive for greatness as we start going to day of here and the general election that will be held in November. So thank you for that. All right. We are now going to a second, or I'm sorry, item number three is precinct committee and appointments. I will ask Fran McCarron to guide me here for a second because it looks like there's a little bit of a change.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just first, if I could clarify, who made the second on the last vote, just so we get it correct in the minutes?
That was Gallardo.
Mr. Gallardo?
That's for Gallardo.
Okay. Thank you.
Wonderful Supervisor from District Park.
Wonderful Supervisor Gallardo.
Yes, do you know him?
Never heard of him. Never heard of him.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the next item is the precinct committee and appointments. And Scott Jarrett, you can correct me if I'm incorrect, but this is where there are the same number of people running as there are slots available or fewer. And so we are able to cancel the elections and appoint these people. Scott Jarrett, is that correct?
That is correct, Ms. McCarron.
Thank you. And in this particular list, three of our supervisors will be running in their precinct. So if we will take this in four votes, the first vote would be for all precincts with the exception of Kiva, Onyx, and Desert Sky. all precincts, with the exception of Kiva, Onyx, and Desert Sky. And then we could take individual votes for those three precincts where that particular supervisor could recuse themselves.
Okay, so the first vote will need a motion and a second to vote, but those precincts, then if you, if the supervisor has, has heard that those are sensitive towards this, he'll need to recuse himself before we make the motion and vote. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, the first vote will be for all the precincts except these three, so everyone would be available to vote.
Everyone is available to vote on that, according to the Fran McCarrill's directive. We will exclude those. Yes, Supervisor Chukri.
Fran, great way to deal with a difficult, delicate situation. And with that, not to preempt the vice chair, I would make a motion to approve all of those appointees, with the exception of those three precincts mentioned by the clerk of the Board.
Thank you, Ms.
Second.
I got, thank you to both Supervisor Chukri and Supervisor Gates. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We'll now get set up with the next vote.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, this would be a vote for the Kiva precinct. And Mr. Chukri, I understand you will be recusing on this vote.
I am recusing myself. I will shut my camera off, so you don't have to see me, see my face, and I will recuse myself and therefore step off the dais.
Thank you. We'll give you ten.
Well, a temporary dais.
We'll give you five seconds to do that. Okay, looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of this item.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We will wait till Supervisor Chukri gets back on the phone.
I'm back.
Okay, Supervisor, you're welcome. Supervisor Chukri is now back on the phone. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, the next vote would be only on the Onyx precinct. I understand that Supervisor Gates will be recusing from this vote.
Okay.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. I'll do the same as Mr. Chukri just did.
Great, as you step away from your dais. I'll give you a couple seconds. Okay, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I'll take a motion by Supervisor Chukri and a second by Supervisor Gates, if that is okay with you guys.
No, I think you mean Supervisor Sellers.
I'm sorry, sorry. Supervisor Sellers, yes, I did. Sorry. Gates is in my head. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next item.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, this would be a vote on the Desert Sky precinct. I understand Supervisor Gallardo will be recusing from this vote.
Mr. Chairman, yes, I will.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. I will give you a couple seconds to step away from your dais. And with that, I will look for a motion. Which is funny, because no one's making the motion, so I guess.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
You got to think about it, Mr. Chairman. I guess I will second it.
All right.
Wait, wasn't Gallardo the one who, who didn't want us to have this responsibility anymore?
Yes, he did. Maybe we should prove a point to him right now. Just let him, let him wonder what's going on, why his is longer. Okay.
Maybe we should heed that, Mr. Gates. I think we actually, this is the time to heed that.
It is.
Okay, discussion. All right. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We will invite Supervisor Gallardo back. Supervisor Gallardo, are you on?
What took so long?
Great debate.
I'll let you find out.
We couldn't, we couldn't get a motion, Mr. Gallardo, then we couldn't get a second, then, I don't know, it's very complicated.
All right, we are through with that, then. Item number four is going to be executive session, so I will call for a motion for the Board to convene an executive session.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Chukri. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, let me figure out while you guys are on the phone, then, how we are going to do this. I asked Fran that if we could just, being that, we know that we have a little issue to work on, and, and up on one of our floors, I asked Fran if we could just continue to do, go into executive session here, down here in the auditorium. Before we start, does anybody need a little bit of a break, or is everything in plan to go ahead and start?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, let me let Deb explain. We're going to take a slight break, but she's going to explain what any of them may need to do.
Okay, go ahead, Deb.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we will be ending the webinar as the open meeting has concluded. Supervisors, I have sent you a email just now to remind you of the number to call back into.
With an access code.
With an access code, do all?
Is it going to be a webinar, Deb, or is that just a call-in?
It's a call-in.
Okay.
And yes, it does have the access code with it also.
Okay, can we have, like, five minutes?
Yeah, so, if you guys.
We're ending, we're ending this, right?
Uh, yeah, just one second, though. I will go ahead, and the clock here says 12:50. I want to go right into it as much as possible. I'm going to take a five-minute break, so we can get all the technology and everybody invited in for the first, for the first item. Go, go make yourself a quick sandwich, but I would like to start in fi, I would like to start in five minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I was, our understanding, you were going to be providing lunch?
Yes, I am, to everyone, to everyone who's in attendance, sitting right here in my seat, and it will be served later.
Well, Grubhub just showed, showed up to my house, so thanks for that. I appreciate that, Clint.
See, he's picking favorites. So, Mr. Chairman, it's now 12:51. Can we say we can resume at 1 o'clock? Is that fair? Call in at 1?
Do you, do you feel like you need 10 minutes? Nine minutes now?
That would be better for me, Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Yeah, I second that motion.
Okay, very good. We will start heads up at 1 o'clock, and we'll get everything in place for that. Is my team here ready to go for that? I'm sorry, we're working right through lunch, but, we good? Okay, very good. Thanks. We'll see you guys at 1 o'clock.
Thank you.